I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and place scheduled for the December 8, 2020, meeting of the Royal Planning Commission. And let's call the order of the folks who are here. We'll start with Monica.
I'm here. Good evening.
Ms. Beke, you're here?
Yes, present and Beke.
Shar, you're muted.
Here.
Woody?
I am here.
And Mr. Klooster?
I am here as well.
We don't have the mayor, but there's six of us, so we'll proceed. Hopefully, he'll show up. All right, first order of business, the approval of the minutes from the November 10, 2020, meeting. Any comments, questions, or motion? Commissioner Douglas?
Y'all move approve.
You have a second. Gontina, a second? All right. All in favor?
Need a roll call.
Need a roll call for this? All right, we'll start with Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
Ms. Beke?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gontina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. The minutes from 2020, November 10, are approved. All right. Now is the time, I believe, for public comment on non-agenda items. I see there was quite a bit of agenda comment through the writings. Mr. Twing, are there, are there public comments on non-agenda items?
No, I believe we only received one phone call that came in, but the phone call covered three items, and Carol is gonna play those at the time each case come up, but there was nothing on non-agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the next order of business will be the new business, and the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's a proposed rezoning from neighborhood business to planned unit development, and that's located a project at 600 West 11 Mile Road. And Mr. Twing, can you give us a preview?
Certainly, I can reference the staff report. I don't see the petitioners in yet. I don't know if you want to wait for them. I don't see them on my screen anyways.
Could...
Carol, do you know if they're there?
They are not.
Okay. Okay, well, this is something that I haven't dealt with before. Is it proper to... Do we need to have a motion to move them to the end? Or would we normally... They, they receive this agenda, I assume, that they know they're first. Maybe Mr. List or yourself can give us a little guidance here. It would be my inclination to say, okay, you're gonna move them to the end of the, end of the call, but what, what is the proper procedure?
Yes, Mark List here. You could do it either way. You can either move it to the end, or probably better would be to entertain a motion to move it, move the agenda item to the end.
All right, well, I've raised the issue, but that was just my idea. Does any of the other commissioners have similar thoughts?
Propose a motion to move Agenda Item E1 to the end of the agenda.
You have a second. Gontina, seconds. All right. Any discussion of this? Thing none? We'll take, we'll take another vote. We'll do the roll call. Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Beke?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gontina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Then I'm a yes. So we'll move, the item number one is moved to the end of the agenda. All right. Second item on the agenda is a public hearing, also proposed rezoning. This is for mixed-use two to planned unit development, and this would be the site that we've actually seen this before, 1003 South Washington Avenue. So we'll ask Mr. Twing to give us a preview here.
Yes, very briefly, as you indicated, the planning commission has seen a development for this site previously. As we indicated in the report, that was back in 2019, where, where it received approval. It was for, at that time, forty-three, or a forty-three-foot-high building with forty-eight dwelling units and sixty-three parking spaces, underground and into ground level, in terms of the proposal. The site, as you may recall, is at the southeast corner of Hudson in South Washington. The petitioner is a new petitioner. They're petitioning to demolish the existing structure and still construct forty-eight dwelling units. The, the building itself has been lifted up some, as you'll see in the report and on the plans. Where the parking now is on the lower level still, there's only a portion of it that's below grade, and the dwelling units are on the top three floors. I'll let the petitioner kind of describe their project a little more when we, when he gets to it, but the, the main level, rather than going some twenty-five feet underground for parking, the main, or lower level is only going about four point, or about four feet, eight inches at this point. I'll touch briefly on the deficiencies or items the planning commission should consider. The first one you'll see in your report is regarding the minimum corner vision clearances. There is a requirement for a ten-foot triangle setback. In this particular case, at the northwest and northeast corner of the building, and at the driveway entrance to Washington Avenue, that don't quite meet that standard. Minimum lot size, and you'll see again, from a density standpoint, the site's a little over fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty square feet size area. The density standard would allow three dwelling units. The petitioner, as we indicated, is proposing forty-eight, and that would require a hundred and forty-seven thousand square feet. The ground level under, or the ground level and street frontage is generally considered to have permitted uses on it in neighborhood business, other than parking. In this case, they have some common areas, tenant, for the tenants shown, but primarily it's parking, so that's another deviation from the standard. The maximum height listed in the ordinance is thirty feet. They are proposing fifty-five feet for this development. Setbacks on all sides for multifamily and mixed use are generally ten feet by code. You will see the deviations there on listed. The west side is a building that's set back about two feet. The north side is one foot. The east side is also one foot, and the south side is on the property line. Screening, there are generally a requirement for screening. This building technically takes up, as you can tell, the majority of the site. And then lastly, based on the parking requirements for forty-eight units, they would, under code, require two for each unit, or ninety-six spaces in this case, and in the previous approval, they are, they proposed sixty-three spaces. Those are the items that I think you'll have to review as part of the deviation on, on specific code requirements. I'll let the petitioner, I guess, address their project unless you have questions from me on the report.
I do have a question for you, and this, there's a couple of these in our packet today, where this zone is, in the master plan, it's, it's mixed-use residential slash office slash commercial, but we don't, we don't have the details of that zone mapped out yet, I take it. That's, that's, that's the future, but we don't know the particulars of that at this point, do we?
Well, this site is actually zoned mixed-use two, and those provisions are, are what we reference in terms of the deviation. The petitioner is asking you to rezone it to planned unit development, primarily to address the deviations from the zoning ordinance as part of the planned unit development. So yes, there is a specific zoning district in place, and that's the mixed-use two district.
Yes, there already is, and I understand why you did what you did and, and why it's appropriate. I guess what I'm asking is, in the, if this was zoned instead, mixed-use-dash-residential slash or office slash commercial, as envisioned in the master plan, in the future, I guess this is a broader question, would the petitioners who come forward looking for planned unit developments, because they're dealing with the mixed-use two, would there be a difference? Are we, are we looking forward to a mixed-use residential office commercial? Zoning requirements are gonna be different than mixed-use two, or mixed-use one, or neighborhood business?
Well, the designation in the master plan has nothing to do with zoning. It's a land use designation, and you, you take that broad land use category and then apply the zoning district to it in the, in, in the zoning map to what you think meets that intent. So I would say the current zoning of mixed-use two is consistent with the master plan designation.
Okay, that's really what I'm asking, is it, whether or not the master plan requirements might be different in the future, but you, you think it'd be more consistent with mixed-use two?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Petitioner is here? And I think you're on mute, Mr. Howard.
I'm new to this, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
You may proceed. Nice to see you.
Thank you. As, as was stated earlier, you did see this a year and a half ago, I guess, would be now, when it was owned by my previous client, and we were approved for the forty-eight units, sixty-three spaces, at an overall height of forty-three feet. At that time, we did have a report, and we did get a report, and you stated in this report that the engineering department did mention that the water table could be an issue on this particular site. My previous client chose not to pursue soil borings at that particular time. As an architect, and as the architect, I think I really did fail my previous client in not getting those soil borings done, because we never would have presented a project that was, would have been so costly to build, and we, we had preliminary numbers in terms of trying to de-water this site and to go down the twenty-five feet, and the project was gonna fail miserably. After that approval process is when my current client, Alex Mansour, who is actually on the line, purchased it from my previous client. At that time, we had soil borings done. We had a, we had actually more complete survey done at that time as well. That is when we found out that the water table is actually about eight feet below grade, hence why we had to then go back and redesign this building, adding the twelve feet to the overall height to pull the parking up out of the ground. Nothing else has changed with this building, other than the fact that it is twelve feet taller. Same number of units, same number of parking spaces, same number of level of parking spaces. The difference is, we were able to redesign it to only go down four foot, eight inches, four feet, eight inches, and then up to get our other two levels before we actually got to our quote-unquote "first residential floor." The building, and I'm gonna show you some updated renderings that were not done prior to my submittal package, but I'd like to share those with you, so you can see the height of the building, one in relationship to the building next door, but also the height of the second floor, or the first residential floor, above grade, which is actually about eight feet higher off of the sidewalk than it was before. But I'm really trying to explain is, the building really isn't different, other than the height, but I think, and this is my opinion as the architect and designer, that the building has a much more scale to it. It's, and I'll, and I'll share these with you, if I can figure this out.
Mr. Howard, I made you a co-host, so all you have to do is have the picture open in another window.
Okay.
And then hover on the bottom to share screen.
Okay.
And select the window that you want to share.
Okay. Is that correct?
We see a rendering.
Okay, well, hey, I did something right. So, the, the building itself is, again, I hate to keep reiterating this, but it is taller than the previous design that we had. The, the height of the building in relationship to the building next door, and in the package, I actually silhouetted the building, which is 1017 Washington, over our building, kind of a, I guess it would be a south slash north elevation, to try and give you the relationship of the height of that building in comparison to our building. Now certainly, the only people that will ever see that will be the people who actually live in those residential units. But I feel it's important to fully understand this particular building, how it react, relax, reacts to the building next door. I have another rendering that I can show you as well. If I can. Says sharing is paused.
You may have to stop sharing and then reshare if you're stuck.
Okay, I'll try that. I wish I had my college daughters here, they'd figure it out. Okay, I think I have it. So this is a rendering of looking at it from the corner of, of Washington and Hudson. You can see that, everyone?
Yes, we see it.
Thank you. So, again, this building is taller, but I've tried to open up the facade at the ground level, and as Tim had mentioned, the corner is going to be a, what we're calling a tenant meeting area, but it's also gonna have outdoor seating, not for the public, but purely for the tenants in this particular building. So, we've really tried to open this facade up. We've really tried to bring a lot more of the street into the main level of this building. This building's also gonna have a concierge for the tenants. To make the parking work, we actually did, and were engaged with a company out of Canada to provide two car elevators. So we're gonna actually be having an ingress and an egress elevator that will go, take you down half a floor, take you up another half a floor, or take you up a full floor. So, we felt that the two elevators were clearly important for tenants leaving, coming and going in, in the actual building itself. The company that I'm working with out of Canada, we are now getting their final details on the actual elevator itself. Also, there's a, I can share with you a drawing, which I did, to help the elevator company understand how the elevator was working, and I have a section of that, if, if you care to, to, to see any of that particular detail. I'm not gonna bore you with that information, but if you'd like to see it, I'm more than happy to share that. The, the building itself will also have, as was previous, we're gonna have, actually we increased the size of the green roofs on top of the building. We also have developed and incorporated a rooftop deck, which will sit on the corner of Hudson and Washington, only for the tenants, but everybody will have access to that one thousand-square-foot rooftop deck. Again, keeping it away from the neighbors to the south of us, and focusing it on the corner of the building. Other than that, I'd be more than happy to answer questions with regards to the proposed design.
All right. In order to do that...
Do I stop, share that?
It makes it difficult for me to see all the participants, so yes, unfortunately.
Okay.
Nice rendering.
Thank you.
All right. Questions for the petitioner? Mr. Klooster, you're on mute.
Is the car elevator system a managed system, such that there's a software system that selects floors based on available vacant spaces? Is it based on...
There would be assigned. Each space would be assigned.
Based on residents having a pre-designed or pre-assigned space, and it just takes them to that level?
That's correct.
This is a public hearing. If there aren't any more questions, Gary, you may want to open the public hearing. I don't believe there's any comments on this, but you should at least open it, close it.
All right, thank you. Let's do that. There's Swanger, are there any public comments?
There was one. There's actually one person left, one public comment covering three topics, and this was one of them. It is Mr. Karlowsky. This was his second comment. I believe I have it queued up at that spot, so here we go.
The, in another vein, however, the project at 1003 South Washington Avenue, Site Plan 2012-21, is completely, completely too dense, and really needs to be rethought. You've got far, a 1.3 parking spots per unit is, is not realistic, in my opinion, even if they're single-bedroom, single-bedroom units, and the density is, is a bit much as far as height and, and congestion at that particular point. And I would also like to know something about the four or nine.
And that answers comment on that topic.
Yeah, are there any others?
There were no others, just one call in.
Well, let's come back to the commission here, and if there are questions for the petitioner.
I had a question.
Mr. Gontina?
So you mentioned the, the water table being one of the main issues. You had to raise the building up. I just had a question regarding any sort of engineering systems related to that water table. Was the design change to, to move the building up, did that essentially solve the problem with the water table, or did you have to redesign or upgrade any of the engineering systems below that to help deal with the water table issue as well?
What, we're gonna have a stormwater detention underground system underneath the parking lot. The beauty of being able to pull the building up and get us up out of that water table was the fact that we then had the ability to get ourselves up out of it, even with the system of the pipes that are gonna sit under the parking lot. What this ultimately solved was a continuous pump system that we were gonna be required to have, once we, once we knew where that water table was, based on that. The other issue was a structural one, and it was stated by the city as well, that compromising the foundation at 1017 Washington could have been an issue. So we've solved that problem as well. So really, in many ways, by pulling this building up out of the ground, we have been able to reduce our cost, construction costs, but also longevity as a maintenance cost on the building, we've been able to reduce, and also, the stormwater detention system now fits us into a gravity-fed system that will take us to either the stormwater in the alley or out in Washington. We haven't gotten to that, to solve that problem just yet. And which one we're gonna tap into?
That's, that's kinda what I was thinking, I sort of answered the question. You weren't, it seems like the previous situation at the building height where it was, sort of forced you into a much more complex engineering solution, potentially, whereas raising the building up takes you out of that into a much more simplified system of dealing with the water. Thank you.
Mr. Klooster?
Is the, are the proposed green roofs part of that stormwater management plan, such that you're achieving some level of storage, evaporation, et cetera?
Yes, it is. It is. We, we, what we've, what we really decided to do was, with that green roof system, was we actually increased the size of it from our previous design, and the main rationale behind that was to reduce the amount of water. Now what I have done, or what we have been able to do at this point, is to disperse the rooftop drains, so that we're bringing them down into different areas of the building to, again, reduce the size of the, or the amount of water that's coming down at one particular time. Before, the previous design had us doing much larger pipes, which would have been more of like a, for lack of a better way to put it, a waterfall, coming down those, where now we're kind of really spacing them out, where now the system will be able to handle it, the detention system will be able to handle it a lot easier.
I'd, I'd recommend looking into a system, since you're doing green roofs, they call it a purple roof, it's somewhere between a blue roof and a green roof, that's really designed to, to do a lot of detention, and it might, might allow you to reduce that underground detention infrastructure even more, as a potential opportunity.
That'd be great. Thank you. Ms. Beke?
Hope you're still on mute there.
Sorry, I apologize. This location, I do remember the previous discussion, is, is a very walkable area with a eighty-seven walk score and a sixty-three bike score, and it's very accessible to, obviously, all of our downtown amenities and also offices, so hopefully some people who live there will be walking regularly, rather than using vehicles. Remind me, is there bike parking available in the parking garages as well, so it's not just auto parking in terms of our ratio issue?
There is, actually, if you look at, I don't know if you have it, or I can pull it up, but on A000, which is my main floor, we have bike racks along the south side of that, and we're also proposing, I don't know if you want me to pull this drawing up or not, but, but the, I certainly can.
Sure.
But we also have, even with that said, hold on, let me see if I can get to this. Let me try and open this first, and then I'll explain what some thoughts are. Let me try and open this first and then I'll explain what some thoughts are. So if you can see down at the far south end of the building. Where I'm circling, I think, can you see that? There are bike racks located there and those are exterior or outside bike racks. Also, what we've developed is on our second parking level, so it'd be above the lobby area. We're actually going to have an indoor parking or bike storage room for people that will be able to park their bikes in there if they don't want to bring them all the way up to their. To their apartments.
And how many bike spots will be total?
So right now we have the ability for. 12 bikes that will occur outside. And we, the room we're actually designated for the interior bike storage. We could probably get upwards of 30 up there.
That's good. And just one other comment. Normally, again, I prefer bigger setbacks, but we've had a long discussion about this particular building. I think this particular location. You benefit from the fact that South Washington has had a road diet and is much calmer than it otherwise would be. And I appreciate the trees along the curb and all of the green space that's been incorporated based on our previous discussions.
The other thing I'd like to point out just really quickly. Is I understand the triangle corners. I do understand that and I do try to achieve that when I can. Being this is such a tight site, it's it's a small site. But I think what's important to note is that by pulling the second floor up another eight feet or 17 feet off the ground. And then by pulling that front facade or that corner back. You real, I really have, we really tried to open that corner up at the at the corner of Hudson, Hudson and Washington. Much better in my opinion than than the previous design.
Mr. Gantina.
Just one more quick question on the vehicle elevator. Can you give me a sense of, I guess, how long that elevator would take to get an individual to their floor? So from understanding what you described correctly, you pull up to the elevator, depending on which floor you're assigned to park on. It takes you up or down that half floor. So that action of pulling onto the elevator, it moving a half a floor and then returning back to that ground level is roughly how long?
I'm still working through those details with the elevator company, but from all the documentation and their discussions so far. It's depending on how long it takes a car to exit out of that or enter into that particular elevator. They say it's no more than 20 or 30 seconds.
The only reason I asked was I was sort of thinking of the worst case scenario in terms of if there was. A lot of people that came home, you know, on any particular evening from work. If there was going to be a backup out onto Washington or Hudson, just for people trying to get in, but that answers the question.
Yeah, that 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 was a concern of ours as well. We didn't want a Starbucks issue on 13 and Woodward, right? And and so that's why we actually pulled the the elevator back off of the street. Which actually allows for two cars to stack behind the elevator. Now granted, it would be crossing the sidewalk, but only for two minutes or three minutes or however long it would take for. For that elevator to come back, but that that we were conscious of that as well.
This is a recommendation eventually to the city commission as a result. The planning commission has the option to obviously recommend approval as a preliminary. PUD, which means the petitioner would have to bring revised plans back within the next six months. You also have the ability to approve it or recommend approval as a final PUD. Then would forward the recommendation to the city commission for its final action. Again, I think I highlighted the deficiencies and they're all listed in the report. But those are your options, I think, as far as an action item. The one, the one thing I would point out on, just for clarity on. One of the items we've got listed is signage shall comply with the sign ordinance. Or receive necessary variances. I just happened to notice, Brian, that your rendering though has a sign up above the. Roof and I just want to make sure that that's not technically part of this submission at this point.
No, no, it wasn't. It was really just to. We we named the building. It really was a matter of just putting the name of the building on it. It 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 clearly we would. We would meet whatever ordinance that we're required to meet. If it can't be up above that parapet line, that's fine. Not not an issue.
Other, there you go. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, many of the elements of this proposal we've seen before and I voted in favor of. I don't have a problem really with the setbacks. I appreciate the the thoughtfulness put into that that corner. The respect for the need for a for a triangulation, if not actually fully achieving it. The parking standards are what we've been routinely granting around the city for the past couple of years. And I think those are consistent with market standards, but I will say the height here is giving me heartburn. When this proposal first came before us with underground parking, I was deeply skeptical and obviously rightly so. About your ability to achieve that and I see that now you need to lift this building up in order to accommodate that parking. The current zoning standard of 30 feet is not consistent with modern architectural practices and and customer preferences. But and we've been granting heights higher than that, but I'm just not really ready to go to 55 feet. I thought 48 feet was pushing the envelope and I just feel like 55 feet is too tall. So I listened to arguments from my fellow commissioners, but at this point I'm I'm probably not inclined to recommend this PUD to go forward to the city commission.
May I make a comment with regards to that? So.
Sure, I'm going to ask the question about it too, but go ahead.
Okay. I'm, and I and I understand that the new zoning ordinance has not been adopted yet, so I'm not using. I'm not trying to use that as a barometer. But in the mixed use to underneath the rough draft of the new ordinance. It potentially does allow for 56 feet. Now granted, it's it hasn't been approved. It's not that I I wasn't trying to use that as. Oh, by the way, potentially that could be 56 feet. But in many ways, I feel that. This building as it's designed does relate to the neighbor. And we don't have a lot on Washington use as a a guide. And. I look at the building that's being under construction across the street or diagonal from us. And granted, that's not at 55 feet, but as we move. In my, and this is my opinion, as we move to downtown, towards downtown, towards Lincoln. The the height, I I believe, really starts to frame the street. And being that Washington has now changed to bike lanes and slowing traffic. In my opinion, I really think that the overall height. Is somewhat consistent with what we hope, in my opinion, as the architect and as a. An owner in Royal Oak. That we get this height, that we that we start to. Create a framework for Washington, south of Lincoln. I I. I I just think that it it really truly. Helped the building and and that's again, as the designer and as the architect.
All right, I think Commissioner Douglas wanted to respond to that.
I abs, I agree with your assessment that changes on Washington are perhaps inevitable and perhaps desirable. But we're not there yet. We have a master plan that's more than 20 years old. Which I've been advocating for changing now since I've been on the city commission, most assuredly, and certainly since I've been on the planning commission. But at this point, we have the zoning ordinance that we have, we have some flexibility around that zoning ordinance, but. But saying that Washington is going to get, Washington Avenue is going to get taller. In the future, isn't a foregone conclusion and not one that I'm willing to jump to without considerable public input.
This is Biggie.
Sorry, apologize. I just wanted to add a comment related to that and then ask a question. Again, as far as the the greater height, but you again also have no setback. And so there is a trade off there from a human scale and a livability scale. And so you're asking for both at the same time here. So I think that makes it harder on the height. Although again, as it stands now in this position, if all the other places don't start filling in the same way. There's kind of some breathing room around this spot based on the parking lot across the street and some of the other homes that are on Washington. One of my concerns generally. Is that if we do keep having. Buildings right up against the street and and again, that type of building I've stated in many meetings was something that was traditional. Back when we had streetcars and people were almost always walking and not when we had cars driving all the time. We're creating kind of wind tunnels and we're creating kind of this kind of facade as a line, which I don't think is appropriate for Royal Oak scale. In the scheme of things that every building would have all of it. So again, here the ask is high because it's both the height as well as the the line coming right up to the sidewalk. But my question, shifting gears, is thinking about that elevator and the in the parking. Did you consider having the driveway on Hudson rather than Washington? Because we do have the community college right there, just a block, I think, ahead. And then the other apartment building right next to this building. And so from again, a walking standard is starting to have a lot of. Garages right stacked up, which can cause backup. So I just wondered if you had looked at entrance at a different spot.
We didn't, only because we just kind of swapped out the. You know, what we had is the ramp system prior in the previous design and kind of put the elevators in the location of where those ramps were starting. But with the elevator concept. It certainly could, the 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 issue with this, with with coming in off of Hudson is. We don't have the length or the depth of the building to really. Make an efficient parking level where it's 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 basically. You know, 100, you know, by 150. And and so we felt that designing it, the parking laid out more efficiently. Coming in off of Washington. It it, it's not to say that coming in off of Hudson couldn't couldn't work and 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 be redesigned. I'm assuming. Your premise on that is to try and. Get rid of the drive approach or the cars entering and exiting similar to what 1017 Washington has. So you could get more. Meeting space or get more storefront along Washington. I'm assuming that's where you're coming from.
That that and just again, the issue of cars both crossing the sidewalk as well as the potential for a backup situation on Washington. I I was just curious what whether that was considered and in trying to think through the whole overall street functionality.
All right. Other questions? Mr. Klooster.
So this question is partially partially to the petitioner and. Partially to the city attorney as well. Knowing that the community college parking deck is about a block north of here and. Most community colleges don't have significant overnight parking demands. If the petitioner has potentially approached the college to form a parking agreement that would allow residents to park in that parking garage. And from the city's perspective. If that. Legal parking agreement would satisfy. A portion of the parking requirements and potentially address height issues as well as. Some of the, some of the density issues that have been discussed.
City has used parking agreements up and down Woodward. But then the issue then becomes. The continuity of the parking, how long is it going to last?
We've had, we've had parking agreements in the past between petitioners and there are some provisions about how far away. Those agreements can occur. From a staff standpoint, I would strongly recommend against agreements. They tend to fall apart and once the building's up. Your remedy is pretty limited. You know, unless it's some sort of permanent easement that that a property owner cannot. Get rid of, I would strongly recommend against agreements that can fall apart.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with that. We've, we've seen in the past. Problems, enforcement issues because it. You know, the city does not want to be in the position of being the policeman and enforcing private agreements between property owners.
All right. Other questions? I have a couple of. If it's my turn here. Okay, Mr. Howard, I got a couple of questions here for you about, let's start with the. Parking elevator. I haven't seen one of these before. I don't know if you've worked with one of them before. Are these devices the only way that a car can get into the parking lot?
Yes.
And are there other ways to get in the parking lot? There must be. If you're a pedestrian or you got a bicycle, how do you get in?
There are. Single doors from the lobby that takes you from, you know, into each parking level. As a tenant comes down, for instance, from their apartment. The elevator stops at every one of the parking levels. As a pedestrian would have to come into the lobby to get approval to go then into. So it's not. One cannot just meander into the parking like a public parking garage.
And if I've, if I've got a bicycle, if I'm a tenant and I want to park on the inside on the second level. I gotta bring my bike through the lobby or what do I do?
Yes, you bring it through the lobby and then you would go up the elevator. To that level if you had the bike.
All right, is the, does the. And maybe you don't have this level of detail yet. Is there a generator in case the power goes out?
There is. There's a, we have a generator that'll be on the roof that will be for the. Elevator system as well as the pedestrian elevator, as well as general building lighting throughout the building.
All right, what about, one thing that concerns me a little bit is. These, these elevators are triggered by who? Is there a tenant or or I I know Mr. Klooster asked a question about this, but I'm a little. Curious, how are they triggered?
Well, as as I'm diving into this and as I'm starting to get more information on this particular car elevator. They are informing me that they're. You know, it's 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 similar to a key fob. You know, getting into a building, for instance. Where it will probably have or a keypad of some sort. That's, that's part, that's one particular option that we have. You know, another one could be more of a kind of remote. That triggers the elevator to come as somebody pulls up. As well as somebody exiting from from one of the other levels as well.
All right, I have a little bit of concern, maybe it's an over concern, but about safety features for these elevators. I mean, an elevator, we're all used to them, but this won't have a door on it, will it?
Yes, yeah, it has a door.
So the car goes in, the door shuts?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, we're not exposing the move, moving.
No, no, it's not like your old time elevator where you pull the the gate across or anything like that. No. This, this is a door, like a garage door that closes. And then the elevator moves and when it, the elevator gets to that level, the door opens up. It's got doors at both ends, both sides.
And if I'm a visitor, if I want to come see somebody, I can't get in here, so.
There's no guest parking within the parking garage.
Okay, so any guests are going to probably have to park somewhere in.
On the street of some sort, yeah.
All right. And as for the parking ratio, we talked about this last time we were here, but I mean, these are small apartments. I see many of them, most are 600 feet, right? 600 square feet?
Yeah, they they range, there are only 12 that are two bedroom units at 900 square feet. Most of them are in. Most of them are in the one bedroom at 650 and then there are 16, I believe, at studios at 500 square feet.
All right. I have two more quick questions. You do have some, even though you've got the green roof, you have some landscaping along Washington and Hudson.
Almost 1100 square feet that we've put on the three sides.
Last question, but it's, it it deals with the height. So you, you, I appreciate that you have this south elevation where you've superimposed the the neighboring building on it. But I want to make sure it's clear for the record here. Last time you had ramps right next to the building. So there was a, like a courtyard there and the, and the balconies are not, were not next to the southern neighbor. This is similarly situated now?
It's exactly the same. The building is a U-shaped form. And if you go to, I can pull up a typical floor plan that will show you exactly how that courtyard or open well works. So this happens to be the second floor, but second, three and four are all the same. If you notice where I'm following, that's the building line.
Yes.
And this is our 1017 Washington building. As a note to that, if you notice on the 1017 Washington building, they put in three sets of windows. One window happens to be located right here. That's the one that has insulation over it. So that's not even really a usable window. The other two windows occur here and here. So those will not be closed off. They, they can choose to close them if they like, but but we're not closing their windows off. And if I can make a statement about that, and I'm not sure how those windows were actually put into a firewall on a property line, because by code, they are not allowed to put any windows or any fenestrations into a firewall. How that ever got approved through the billing department, I have no idea. But I just want to make a mention of that.
Okay, it didn't come before the planning commission, I can tell.
No, it did not.
So but what I'm, what I'm speaking to here is in in dealing with the height issue, the relationship to the building to the south matters, I think. Not only just visually, but i- if I understand you're drawing A201 correctly, two of your stories worth of and and eight of the balconies are above the the line where the residents to the south would would they're, they're, they're high enough where they're can see each other. But you're not right next to them. You're
I am not.
You're, you're some feet away in across the courtyard.
That is correct. I'll show you. I'll pull up that 201 right now. So the reason I silhouetted the 1017 building and shaded it was to clearly define the relationship of the overall building height of this, which are those little houses that occur on top of this building, are actually higher than 55 feet. Now granted, they're not sitting right on the street, but they are back and you do see them from a perspective standpoint at 59 feet and some change. So what I really was trying and attempting to do was to show that the building next door does envelop and does start to really relate or our building starts to relate to their building from a height standpoint. And I think that you know, clearly, you know, it's, it's in my opinion, this, this, our building really, I, I feel talks a lot to the context of a building that's already there. And I sit on a corner. So I don't have a building that's gonna butt right against me. And hopefully down the road, we get a building going across Hudson from us in that parking lot with the dry cleaner and all that. And now we really start to frame the street. But I really think that 1017 Washington already has, you know, somewhat set that deter determination. The other comment I want to make is where I'm showing this height right here, which is their stair tower and that, that funny little half round top window thing that occurs on Washington, that's actually at 47 feet. So the difference between where I am and where that stair tower is, which again, we butt right next to each other, is not a tremendous amount of height difference.
All right. Thank you. Those are my questions. Mr. Gantina?
I just wanted to clarify one point because I think I understood your concern about that the the relationship on the south elevation to 1017 Washington. But if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the units that I guess would face that courtyard to the south of your building don't have any balconies, but there are windows there? So any sort of like relationship to 1017 Washington through that courtyard or across that courtyard would really be from a window, not necessarily a balcony overlooking that building. Is that correct?
Uh, yes and no. There are those windows I commented with regards to that sit right in that that masonry wall, which which pretty much sits right on that north property line of theirs and our south property line. But as they go up another floor, those houses that sit on top of that building are stepped back off of that north wall of that building. So they actually have patios that kind of you almost, you almost loop around the freestanding house up there and walk around it. So that particular wall of that house does not sit right against or sit right on that property line or that, or that wall, that that north wall.
Yeah, that I understood. I guess what I'm trying to clarify is the the units of your building.
Yes.
So I guess it would be units 46 through 44, something like that, that have, that are facing that courtyard to the south. There's no balconies to the in, to that interior court.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't fire your question. You're correct. There are no balconies there. There are only windows that you can open, but nothing to walk out onto.
That's, that's what I just wanted to clarify, that there wasn't balconies facing that.
All right. Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there further discussion between the commissioners? Is there a motion?
I guess I'll just make a quick comment and then then bring a motion. I was really concerned about the height of the building as well initially. And so when I went out there today to kind of get a better understanding of how it related to the building directly to the south, I think, you know, in general, that's probably its saving grace on the height question for me. I think it relates to that building just fine. And if that were the, the only issue or the only thing going on, I think, you know, it'd be a tougher sell for me. But in reality, I think they, they have brought forward a thoughtful project. I do appreciate the, it's a pretty extensive green roof, just based on the site square footage that I can tell. It's a difficult, small site to work with, but I think they're bringing, you know, some, a, a solid project and the, the height that they're asking for, again, only because of the building to the south, to me seems to be reasonable to achieve the project. So I'll be supporting it. And so I'm going to make a motion to, Tim, do we need to do this in two parts? The rezoning and separately the site plan?
No, the, it's one action. The only, the only clarity again, I would point out would be whether you're recommending approval as a preliminary PUD, which would mean the petitioner would bring it back to you guys with any revisions before final approval. And that would go to the city commission after that. Otherwise, you can recommend approval of the final PUD and it would go right straight to the city. But all of the conditions are part of the rezoning. There's not a separate action.
Okay. So with that being said, I, I move to approve the rezoning based on what's been presented here as a final PUD approval. Yeah, as well as the proposed real estate plan as it's been presented today.
Support.
Ms. Klooster seconds the motion. So the motion is on the table. Presented by Mr. Gantina, seconded by Mr. Klooster to recommend acceptance of or approval, recommend approval of the rezoning to the city commission with the with the conditions as as presented. Is there discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments that my fellow commissioners have made and that the presenter has offered to us and I, this was like a 5149 decision. I acknowledge that the, in fact, the the net height of the adjacent building is taller than what is proposed, but that height is set back from the street. It's not 55 feet of massing right on Washington. And as I said before, I, I can see that if we were to replan or reassess our planning along this street, we may find ourselves approving higher and more massive buildings, but I'm just not ready to go there at this time. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting against the motion.
Other comments? I'll make some. Yeah, I think the last time we saw this project was extremely ambitious project. I think more than one of us had some doubts that they could actually pull it off. And the fact is that they couldn't. So they've come back with a, with basically the practical solution here, which is to make the building higher. And which is, it seems to me is really the one thing that matters here because the other, I think the other variances, most if not all of them are are pretty minor. We, I'm familiar, very familiar with the site. The building, for instance, to the south was designed with nothing but a brick wall for the very reason they have privacy. So they don't, the fact that the building is close and it doesn't have screening makes no difference. The set, so the setbacks don't bother me either. And I think that parking we've talked about, so I'm going to support the motion. And that's my position. Ms. Beiki?
Just a brief comment. Again, in most cases, I would argue more strenuously for these setbacks. And again, in any, any modifications to our zoning, et cetera, I do think we need to continue to maintain the setbacks and more green space. But again, because we diligently have discussed this and the way the site is now and and some of the modifications that were made to it, I'll also be supporting. But again, I would, I would like to see fewer buildings right up to the sidewalk in the future.
Any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, is that a, a hand or? You'd have to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry. No, it was just a hand to the chin, but unfortunately I wasn't around to see the first rendering or the first project on this, but based on what I've heard today and from the differences and the the changes that were made, I would agree with Mr. Gantina and put support.
All right. I think that we're ripe for a vote. If there's any, not any further discussion, I'll call for and we'll do the roll call. Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Beiki?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
No.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Ms. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion passes.
Great. Thank you.
And so you are good to go to the city commission, if I understand correctly, and congratulations and good luck with this one.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next order of business would be the conditional rezoning from neighborhood business to mixed use two and a site plan. And that is located at 1006 East 11 Mile Road is the petitioner here.
Yes.
All right. So I'm going to turn to Mr. Twing and tell us about your report.
Well, very briefly, as you said, the site is on the south side of East 11 Mile Road between Alexander and Gainesboro. It is currently a vacant site. Was previously, I believe it had multi, a house structure with multiple units in it. The petitioner is requesting to rezone it from neighborhood business to mixed use two as a conditional rezoning. So it does have a specific site plan attached to it that proposed as part of that. They are proposing to have or construct eight units in three separate buildings. They're 42 foot high buildings. The petitioner is on the west side of the site, there are two buildings that are separated and there's one on the east side of the site with four units and the two on the west side each have two units in them. From a parking standpoint, they are proposing to have 18 total spaces. Under the ordinance, they're only required to have 16 pursuant to the two for each unit. Terms of landscaping, they are removing or have removed, according to the demolition plan, 12 deciduous trees. They're proposing to put back 15. So they are somewhat short in terms of the two for one ratio. Just for the planning commission's information, the second reading on the tree ordinance is still pending in front of the commission. So those revisions are not in place yet. Terms of the deviations, I'll, I'll watch you very quickly. Again, the similar to the last one, there is a site corner clearance, a triangle issue at the entrance to 11 Mile, the driveway. And it's primarily related to the, one of the buildings on the west side of the site that sits up close to the it's three feet off of the property line along 11 Mile. Terms of density and those requirements, the site is required to have 27,000 square feet in order to have three dwelling units. It's proposed at 12,000 with eight units. The maximum building height again is 30 feet in this zoning district. They're proposing to have 42 feet. The setbacks for multifamily are 10 feet under the ordinance. The north front yard setback is three feet in one location. The west side is five feet. The east setback is five feet. Obviously, it varies slightly. The minimum distance between the buildings and this applies to the two buildings on the west side of the site, coding the core code is 20 feet. They're proposing to have a separation. They're 12 feet, four inches. And in that area, there is a, one of the surface parking spaces. Again, in terms of the tree replacement, they're proposing 15. As I said, they according to the demolition plan, they removed 12. So technically they would at two to one be required to have 24 trees. Again, this is a conditional rezoning, so it is a technically a recommendation to the city commission with the associated site plan.
All right. Let's hear from the petitioner. We received your talking points, but you're gonna have to actually talk them here.
Yes.
To make your presentation.
Very good. I'm Mike Gordon from Moise Gordon Associates Architects. With me is associate of the firm Evan. And then the owners of the property, Myron and Scott Rubin. And Scott would like to introduce himself.
Okay, hi, hi, everyone. My name's Scott Rubin. I am one of the developers of this project. My company, my company is Andover Management and my office is in Royal Oak at the southeast corner of Main Street. So 13 Mile, I have the big art mural on the north side of my office building. My company, Andover Management, manages 150 residential apartment units and condos throughout Royal Oak. 150 residential apartment units and condos throughout Royal Oak. And that's across 15 different buildings. I also live in Royal Oak. I have been a Royal Oak resident for 17 years. I just built a brand new construction house in downtown Royal Oak. And I look forward to doing more building and development projects in the city. Also, it's called Paladar Townhomes because that's the name of the art sculpture that's on the site. And we plan on refurbishing and relocating the art, the sculptures to another site.
No, the same site.
To the same site on the, on the property. And that's, that's part of our development plan is to have a little art component in our developments.
So continuing, first I'd like, this project was completed about a year ago. We've been working on it. We went on pause because of the COVID issues. There was a lot of debate and we, we had brought it to you earlier than we tabled it. And now we brought it back to you. We'd like to thank the planning department for working with us on that. As noted, the project's for eight townhouse-style units in three buildings. The client approached us after the property that they owned was a five-unit building on the site. It was getting to the point where repairs and upkeep were just exceeding anything that the income stream could demonstrate. And it was demolished about a year ago. We determined through studies that took into account the cost of the property, development costs, insurance, taxes, and the future HOA charges, and was best met by an eight-unit plan. Trying to keep the eventual sales price in line with the market, spreading these fairly fixed costs for development over the eight units. So we wanted to keep the price point at a sort of a good price point for the community. Further, the three-building scheme allows the units to be built as three projects over time as units are purchased. Further, the comfort level of purchasers and the desirability of the project is enhanced with the fact that the majority of units have only one common wall and windows on three sides. Further, given the current health environment, each unit has a private entrance, no common areas, and a private access garage space. We think that moving forward, people are going to need to know very much about the environment, both from a security standpoint and from a health standpoint. An additional design consideration was made to internalize the units into the site. All balcony spaces centered. And the units to the south end of the project are designed with a roof that blocks the balconies from looking down into the adjoining yards. That was a, something that was brought up by the planning department. We found it was a great idea. Further, the minimum rear yard of 19 feet gives ample space so the units not crowd the neighbors to the south. Also, since the project is north of the adjoining residential, no sunlight will be blocked or diminished and no shadows will be cast to adjoining properties to the south. The first floors will be detailed so that in future, as power ownership continues to change and evolve, the garages will easily be partially or completely converted to living or work-from-home space. We will be providing charging stations in each unit also. Further, the unit's exterior cladding and styling is modern yet in keeping with the feel and scale of Royal Oak, we believe. Regarding the number of trees removed, they were mostly old, overgrown, in bad shape, or in fact, dead. The demolition of the existing structure was not possible without removing several trees immediately adjacent since they would be compromised by the demolition process. The increased height request allows for a flexible interior. We believe that even after the pandemic is resolved, the option to live, work, work from home by telecommittee will become the new norm. The additional height allows for two bedroom units and fully internalized parking for most units. These units will be similar in height to the units on the north side of 11 Mile West were made and the units being constructed at the Harrison, both projects adjoining St. family residential. Further, realizing that the site runs 11 Mile, the client wanted to make sure the parking available exceeded the requirements for the minimum and any potential parking on the adjoining street. So where 16 were required, we have provided 18 above the ordinance. The corner vision clearing should not be an issue, given the nature of driving in America favoring the right side of a two-way street as we have illustrated on the drawings. The waste receptacle screening of the current drive is noted at six feet high and eastwards sensing along the property line is noted as fourth. The site fences are simply a deterrent from people walking through the site, from the adjoining driveways, from the adjoining property. We hope you look favorably on this request and grant this approval. And we will be happy to answer any questions and further discuss this with you. Thank you.
All right. So I could ask for questions, but are there public comments? Maybe we should do that first because I know there are written public comments. Ms. Twang, are there audio public comments?
Mr. Kassada, there were no public comments called in for this.
Okay, just what we got in our packets then.
Yeah, you, you actually received one email in regards to this that came in when it was in front of the planning commission back in early part of the year. There were some others that were submitted and those, those are included in your packet. But as part of the notice that went out for this particular case, there was simply one email. And all of those are included in your packet and are, are of the public record.
Let's, let's see if the panel has some questions for the petitioner. Ms. Hunt?
Based on the height and the positioning of this unit or this building, it appears that privacy is going to be an issue or is an issue for the neighbors. Can you explain how the building or the structure of the patio or balcony would prevent being able to look into the neighbor's yard? Can you go into that a little bit further?
Sure. The buildings are 19 feet from the property line. And the self-elevation of all three of the buildings is a sloped roof. So if you're standing on the balcony, you can't see directly to the south. Now, there would be a little bit of a diagonal view. And all the balconies, like we said, face the internal property. They're facing into the, the center of the property. So the, the view is very much contained within the property. So, you know, we, we felt that this was, you know, after meeting with the planning department, and the, the windows on the south side are minimized. And the public spaces of the building are minimized on that side of the building. So we don't think that it's going to have much impact. Are you, can you, are we sharing? Can you see on the screen? We're not sure.
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not screen sharing yet. I just wanted to pull it up first, but I can screen share, I believe. Yes. Share screen. Okay. So I'll share the screen.
You, you might have to be allowed to do that by Ms. Twang.
I just gave them privileges. You should be able to.
Okay, great, great. So screen, well, let's see. Yeah, let's just share with this.
Can you see that?
Yes.
We see a plan. We see elevations.
Okay. Okay. So the, the second one from, the ones, the, the short ones on the left, you know, the, the middle right, right there. Those are the ones facing to the south. You see, there's no windows on the, on the upper floor and the windows are minimized. And with the roof slopes, the balconies are sheltered from that. And as you see on the elevation on the, the bottom row, the third one from the left, you know, that structure right there is, if you're standing on the balcony, you cannot see over to the south. So we think that that does satisfy and make minimizers any of the impact between the, these units. Plus, you're, if you're standing in the balcony, the depth of that storage on that rooftop deck and the fact that you're, you know, 19 feet, you're about 25 feet from the property line. And again, you know, you, we, we make a great effort by leaning over your balcony to look down into those yards. So we think that we were sensitive to that and it was a request and we modified the design to help by turning all the balconies internally and then sheltering them from the south view.
They're set into the building.
Yes, they're set into the building.
All right. Other questions for the petitioners? Unfortunately, I don't see everybody. I'm going to do this.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
There we are. Sorry.
All right.
This is all such a, you know, experiment in Zoom.
All right. Are there other questions for the petitioners? Ms. Beeky?
Can you talk a little bit about, again, you don't have the 10-foot required vision setback there. And then again, on 11 Mile, it's extremely busy street and the sidewalk is extremely close to the street. And so can you talk a little bit about the buffer zone between the building? So as, as people are walking past it, how is that front intersection? I know we have the plans, but if you could just talk, talk through it a little bit. I looked at it today and I'm concerned about that because the street is so busy.
Well, with the, the, the one side is the, the, the building on the east is setback. What's the setback on that? No, on the, on the east. On the west.
Oh, the west is on the sidewalk.
Wait, let's, let's pull up the site plan.
We have a.
Yeah, there's, you know, we're showing the vision cone setback there. Yeah, in, in the strict rule, it's, it's the, it's from, it's from the, wait, you lost, we got it.
Hold on a second.
Are you sharing?
No, we got, we'll screen share again.
Okay. Now, see, the, the, because it's a two-way street, the car is going to gravitate to the right side. And you can see with the 10-foot setback on the right, you have a vision cone that meets the code. Now, the vision code is measured from the total road, but people aren't driving on the left side. They're driving in on the left side. So they have a clear vision across the depth of the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is, you know, 10 feet deep at that point. So we don't think this is a real issue. It doesn't follow your strictly written vision cone, but we think from a practical standpoint, it provides more than adequate for people exiting the site to see people heading down the sidewalk and minimize any pedestrian or other vehicle interaction.
Your, your point is that people aren't exiting out the left side.
Right.
They, they, they shouldn't be.
They shouldn't. And even there, from the curb back, it's 13 feet. You know, once you clear the problem building, there's still 13 feet between the curb and the building.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Gantina?
Yeah, can the petitioner speak to any sustainability plan that may exist for the project or if there's any sustainability features that we may not be aware of that exist?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is, was there a sustainability plan put together for the project at all? Or are there any other sustainability features of the project that exist that we may not know about based on your presentation?
I mean, we, we do have a whole lot of restrictions planned and trying to use you know, swales down the side of the property and using the landscape. But we have not, I think, fully realized that. We did the preliminary engineering. I'd be more than happy to you know, take direction on that. Other than, you know, the, the, having available, you know, like we talked about the trees, we planted as many trees as we can feasibly get onto the site and as much vegetation as we can. And like, you know, address the removal of the old trees, they were mostly, you know, damaged or diseased. And, and like we said, they had to come down. We do have, you know, working with our engineers on water retention is of course, you know, always critical.
Do you notice, you don't have any program in place just yet to address any of those?
No, nothing in place as of yet.
Ms. Beeky?
Um, quick comment and then a question. A couple of the mature trees that I see, the stumps that are just standing there, I had noticed previously even before this came before us. And I was sad to see that they were just cut down when they're actually on the edge of the property and they look like they look pretty sturdy in the terms of what the trunk looks like. Anyway, so that's unfortunate for our tree canopy. My question is, some of the neighbors had concerns about the garbage and the garbage management and where it would be located based on the previous property and issues with rats and such. And could you talk a little bit about the, the waste management on this site as you see it in the future?
Well, we, we have a contained trash enclosure dead center in the site toward the rear of the property. It's designed to the development standards of the city. There will be a private contractor ace. Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. The, the, you know, the, the previous property was a rental property. This is going to be a sole property. So we think there'll, there'll be more attention given to this. And with the homeowners association involved. But it will be a secure, enclosed trash receptacle and it will be contracted. So it's part of the HOA. So we think it's, you know, that that issue should be not an issue.
And I apologize if I can't quite see it on the, on the, on the drawings. Where specifically, how close to the house is behind is it going to be? Because again, those are single-family homes. And that's, that's more to the point. If you could just talk about where specifically it would be?
It's, you know, there's a six-foot masonry fence is conjoined to the six-foot masonry fence at the back of the property. Right there. So there's an enclosure that is, you know, the, the six-foot masonry fence and then it's got the enclosure on, on both sides with the masonry and then the gate.
So it is backing, backing up to the people's homes, in other words.
Well, it's backing up to the property line. Yes.
Correct. Okay, okay. Thank you.
I don't, I can't see everybody, so I don't know if there's another hand up, but I'd like to throw a question there with that about the dumpster there. So one of the comments we saw was that there's concern that, that the dump truck, the garbage truck has come in and then back up all the way out. Is that, is that the plan?
Yes. And that's pretty common in a lot of the communities that we've designed. And the companies are, you know, perfectly, it's a perfectly legitimate management issue. That it, it happens in many urban areas such as this. And with a 28-foot drive and the, it, it would be contracted under multiple pickups. Because the, again, and part of that would be adjusted during, you know, the HOA agreement.
All right. Other, other questions for the petitioner? Well, I'll, I guess I'll go again. Some of the, some of the comments we saw in writing had to do with perhaps a little negligence the last time when there was demolition. How do you plan to work with the neighbors and make sure that, that there's, things are copacetic this time around?
Let me think. When, when the, when, when we d- dumbled the site, I think there was, I think the fence, the fence line at the south side, there was a fence that was shared and the demolition guy did, I think they did, one, one of the boards came off the, the fence and they, and we fixed it right away. But yeah, I think that's what did happen when the, the boards on the fence did come down. But yeah, yeah, you know, I have, I have my number right on the sign. I mean, if there's ever, I live, I live a couple of blocks away from the site too. So I'm always there. I live right down the street.
And we will be, you know, as part of the plan, the south property line will receive a six-foot masonry wall, which will replace everyone's fence along that property line. And we'll be happy to work in concert with the homeowners to pick out the finish of the material that would be satisfactory to that.
All right. You're, you're aware of the issue.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have a friendly relationship with the tenants to this, the other side of the property.
All right, Commissioner Douglas.
I have a, a question for Mr. Twing. Um, the, as he pointed out early in the meeting, the city commission is, is, has taken the first step towards establishing an ordinance that would provide, uh, for developers paying fees when they cannot replace the required trees on their sites. Will we be able to time this or can we write specifications here that will, um, uh, require them to make that accommodation even if we have not approved yet? If, if we haven't approved the tree ordinance? Or will we have a second reading on that ordinance before this PUD gets to the city commission? Or this conditional rezoning gets to the city commission?
Uh, well, I guess the ordinance, right now, the ordinance is not in place. So my answer to the question would be no, you couldn't impose it. Um, the, or impose that option. Uh, it, it's probably going to either go to, the ordinance is probably going to be at the city commission, either at the December, the next December meeting or, uh, more likely the first meeting in January. Uh, if you pass this this evening, it'll probably be in front of when that ordinance gets put in place. Uh, secondly, this is a conditional rezoning and any conditions have to be offered by the petitioner. Um, and, and as part of it, it's not the same as a PUD where you can then impose things. They have to offer, uh, their conditions. They've offered a site plan, uh, that has fewer trees than they removed. Fewer than the ordinance provision that's currently in place.
We, we have a friendly amendment that will offer. As stated, this property owner owns considerable number of properties in Royal Oak. And you could make it a condition that they plant an additional nine trees on one or more of their properties. And they'd be willing to accept that.
I guess the question that is posed, so we've got that offered amendment. Is that something that can be rolled into our approval, assuming there is one, Mr. Twing?
Certainly, if they're offering it, uh, it could be part of the revised plan before it gets to the city commission. They could identify where they're going to put them.
But how would we police that?
Uh, again, I, it would be specific. They would tell us where they're putting the extra nine trees and we'd simply have to verify they were put in. It would be part of the, um, their offer as part of the conditional rezoning. It would be part of the city commission's approval is that development agreement. And it would reference where those nine trees were going to go. So they'd have to provide more detail.
Sure.
Well, so we have, and I, I take to heart the fact that conditional rezoning, we cannot request any changes. So are they, are they revising their proposal on the fly here tonight? Or would they submit a slightly different proposal than that which we might approve here tonight to the city commission?
Well, they've offered it publicly in a public fashion. Uh, I think you can do that and, and simply add it as a condition. Um, that they're going to provide details on where those will be. Again, this is going to the city commission, so they'll have to add it to their packet before it gets to the city commission table. So it'll be clear when it's there.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Is there further discussion, uh, questions for the petitioners or a motion? Ms. Beeky.
I guess I'll just make a comment. Um, as I look at this and, and, and look at the site, I feel that potentially it's still a little bit too close to the houses behind and encroaching on them too much. Again, I understand we can't impose conditions, but, and then similarly, um, on the sustainability question is maybe lacking a bit. For example, if it were seven units, you could back, you could be further away from the houses or something like that. So I'm kind of not fully convinced. And I understand we're just talking about the rezoning, but the rezoning is based on this proposal. So I guess that's just my thoughts at the moment.
Um, just, so I have a clarification though. Uh, this, one of the variances here is not, uh, a 10% of, uh, the lot landscaping. Is that applicable here or they met that, Mr. Twing?
Who was it, who was it addressed to?
Uh, it was addressed to Mr. Twing. There, in some of the, uh, some of the, uh, package we get, we have a, an ordinance that requires 10% of the lot to be landscaped. I don't see that as a variance here, so I just want to confirm with Mr. Twing. Either it's not applicable here or they met it.
Yeah, we haven't listed it as a deviation. They've, they've either met it or it's not applicable. One of, one of the two, like, without, without knowing the actual square footage of what's provided, I can't tell you that it's over 10%. But, um, if we didn't list it as a deviation, it's not a, it's not a problem. Uh, real briefly to go back to the commissioner's amendment too. Their south side setback complies. More than 10 feet away from the south property line. That setback complies, doesn't need a variance due. Um, the, the only ones that are short of the 10-foot requirement are the, uh, north, west and east. The south side complies.
And, and just, okay, thank you for that clarification. And also just to further on that, and so in this particular, if we're a neighborhood business, what would the setback have to be? What is the current setback in neighborhood business?
Well, it varies depending on the use and the planning commission has a discretion, uh, to set it. It, if it were, uh, not a multifamily project, um, it could vary. Um, so there's not a specific answer that I can give you on it.
But, but, but to, to allow it to be 10 feet, which is being met, is, is part of this changing of the current zoning for what it is currently. I assume where the old business was, the setback was bigger. Am I incorrect on that?
If, if it's a commercial building going into neighborhood business, it could have no setback. It could be built on the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, maybe the petitioner can quickly tell us, what is the, the distance, uh, between the southernmost building and the lot line, just so we know for the record?
It's, uh, the, the distance from the, the, the southernmost buildings to the...
Property line, 18 feet.
Well, I can tell you that, the east building, it's 26 feet.
Oh, right, 26, 7, yeah.
Yeah, and the, uh, west building, it's...
19, yeah.
19.
Okay.
So it's quite a bit more than the 10-foot requirement.
Commissioner Douglas.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to move, uh, approval of the, or, or, or move that the, um, the planning commission approve this proposal, this conditional rezoning proposal and send it up to the city commission with the conditions as specified in their offer and in the document presented by the planning commission with the addition of their voluntary offer of, um, replacing, uh, their trees, uh, the trees removed on a two-to-one basis with any, uh, additional being placed on other sites that the city can verify.
Is there a second? Motion is to recommend approval with the, uh, conditions from the department and also the additional offer, voluntary offer to add nine more trees to other sites that can be verified. All right, any, any comments on this?
Well, if there's no second, the motion fails.
Okay, well, I'm probably going to cause a stir here.
Need a second or need a...
Okay, I, I'm probably going to cause a stir here, but the way I read the rules, I'm allowed to second. I'm not allowed to make a motion, but I'm allowed to second, so I'm going to second motion. Is there discussion? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, if I may speak to my motion. I will say, when this plan came to us, uh, initially, uh, earlier in the year, I was not, uh, favorably disposed towards it. But the, uh, the presentation, the explanations from the client have resolved a lot of my, my qualms. Um, I like very much the fact that they have front doors opening on 11 Mile. We've seen that to be a problem elsewhere and they've addressed it. The, uh, question of overlooking the yards of adjacent residential neighborhoods has, has been addressed sufficiently. Um, again, I'm a little, a little, um, not happy with the height, um, but I, you know, 42 feet over and, and it's an angled roof. It's not like a, a, a flat massing along the street as we saw in a proposal earlier. Um, I think this proposal meets the, uh, conditions, um, for a rezoning. Um, and I think it'll be a good project.
And, and from my point of view, oh, go ahead, Ms. Beeky.
Go ahead first, go ahead, Gary.
I was just going to say, from my point of view, I think the design has been, uh, tailored and sensitive to the concerns of, of all the neighbors. And, uh, I like what I see. I think, I do think it'll be a good project and obviously I'll be supporting.
Um, my, my comment, my, I guess my one concern remaining, well, one, one concern that I'd like to be considered is, is again about the, where the garbage is in terms of being on that property line. And again, I know we can't make that a condition, but I'll just state that. Um, and with regard to the honey locust, that's one of the worst choices of trees. If you could look at some native Michigan trees, that'd be much better. But again, not a condition, just a suggestion. Um, I have some concerns, but I do think this meets, uh, many of the, many of the concerns I had originally. Um, and so I do think I will support it for conditional rezoning. Um, especially considering that a business could go up to the lot line behind it and actually encroach more on those houses.
Well, on the business, we'd probably put the wasterecipro goal there as well. Mr. Gantina.
So I, um, I've got some concerns about the project, um, height being one of them. You know, the previous project we talked about was in a completely different area of town in terms of, um, the surrounding buildings. This one seems a little bit more out of place to me in terms of the height. Um, I do appreciate the applicant, um, sort of responding to a lot of the concerns in the plan. Um, at the same time, I, I think, um, the proposal is asking for a lot in terms of accommodations. Um, with, with, you know, not, um, that much in return in terms of what it's offering. I certainly appreciate the, uh, the offer to, uh, adhere to the two-to-one replacement on other sites. Uh, that was actually going to be something that, um, was a bigger issue for me because the removal of the existing trees and the statement about, um, you know, those trees being pretty much dead to begin with, that was still a choice that the applicant made to take, to demo that original building, take all those trees down. Um, all while knowing that they were going to be subject to this two-to-one replacement ratio. So I certainly appreciate that, but I do think it's, um, it's, it's asking for a little too much without offering much back for that particular site. Uh, otherwise, I think, you know, it's a well-designed building, looks nice and all that. I'm just not sure that site is the appropriate site for it, so I'd support it.
Mr. Klooster.
Yeah, I'll, um, I will comment on, um, the height as well. Um, and the, the height in this instance, I think, is an issue due to its proximity to the adjacent, um, residential neighborhood as well as the character of 11 Mile. Um, it's, it, when you look down the street of 11 Mile, the character is significantly different than what's being proposed in this, uh, project. Um, the project is not able to achieve the 150-foot setback from a residential district. Um, that would allow us to, um, provide the additional height by right. Um, so I, I'm, I'm struggling with this project fitting in, um, the way the, the previous project did from a scale perspective. I appreciate the doors on 11 Mile. Um, I think the, the, the frontage on 11 Mile is, is a little odd. Um, in this particular instance, um, understanding it's a narrow site. Um, and there's, there's some accommodations that have been made now. But generally, I think the height in this instance is too much for me, for this neighborhood. Um, and I'm going to have a hard time supporting this motion.
Ms. Hunt.
I also have concerns about the height, um, of the project along with, uh, the, the proximity to the adjacent, um, houses, along with the privacy of the, um, adjacent houses. So I would have a hard time also supporting this project.
Any other comments? Well, I will only say that, uh, I'll just make a, a comment about the height is that, um, I think that the petitioner did explain some of the economic, uh, motivations. A lot of, a lot of the petitioners don't, don't do that, they did. Uh, I also, um, understand that in order to tuck the cars on the first floor, you're going to have to go up farther. And, uh, so it's a, it's a function of that design solution. I think the design solutions they've posed are, are, are generally good ones. And so I'm willing to accept that increased height myself, but that's my position. Any other comments? Well, then I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Ms. Hunt.
Um, I'm trying to remember the motion. Uh, it was Commissioner Douglas' motion, I apologize, uh, no.
Okay. Ms. Beeky.
Okay, I'm on the fence with this and I'm going to go with my original thought. Um, I don't think it's giving enough, so I'm going to say no. I was on the edge there.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina.
No.
Mr. Klooster.
No.
And I'm a yes, so the motion fails four to two. Um, is there, is there another motion? If there, if there is no other motion, then we'll move on, but I'm asking, asking the question.
There has to be.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I will make a motion to deny the conditional rezoning request.
Well, it'll be a recommendation to deny, it will not be a denial.
Thanks, I'll, I'll amend that. I'm going to make a motion to recommend denial of the conditional rezoning request.
Is there a second?
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Klooster. Is there further discussion? Not seeing any hands, I'm going to call for the vote. Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
Ms. Beeky.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
No.
Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
And I am a no, but the motion passes four to two. So the, there will, the rec, there is a, uh, we don't recommend acceptance, approval of the conditional rezon.
Yeah, the recommendation of the planning commission to the city commission will be a recommendation of denial.
All right, thank you. All right, I think that concludes, uh, this part of the hearing. Uh, thank you to the petitioner for your presentation and good luck to you. All right. Next. I lost my paper. All right, next order of business is a public hearing on a special land use and site plan uh, to allow retail sales backed alcohol beverage, uh, for the tobacconist, tobacco-nessed at 28120 Woodward. Mr. Twing.
Um, you, you should have the, uh, planning commission, uh, or planning department's, uh, staff report. Uh, it basically provides you with the background on this particular site. Um, the site is on the northeast side of Woodward Avenue as it, as it cuts diagonally. Uh, it's located between Basset and, uh, Vincetta Boulevard. Uh, you will see... You will see in the staff report that the planning division did administratively approve an application to convert this building to general retail sales for the tobacco sales operation. You also see in the report that the, after the inspections were occurred from the building division, it was discovered there were also beverage coolers and other work going on that wasn't included in the original submission. The follow-up to that was to identify and tell the petitioner that they could continue with non-alcoholic beverage sales. And there was actually an affidavit submitted and signed as part of that administrative approval. The follow-up on those activities and discussions and permits, it was discovered by the building division that there was actually alcoholic beverage sales going on, which does require a special land use permit from the planning commission in the general business district. That's why the petitioner is here in front of you this evening to ask for that consideration and approval for the sale of alcoholic beverages. There is no real exterior occurring to the site other than the planning department's recommendation that you require a site plan for the site and that the refuge enclosure or refuge containers to the rear of the site be enclosed pursuant to ordinance requirements of you pass this forward. We also did identify that some signage was put up without the necessary variances and approvals. Those, I think, are the background of the case. If you have questions, me, I'd be happy to address them.
I have one right off the bat. Is the sign that was installed, is that conforming in all other respects other than that a permit wasn't sought?
There was a, there was actually a sign permit issued for a tobacco sign that did comply, and the building department did issue a a permit for that sign. Then there were signs installed that indicated beer and wine sales. Those were, or did not receive a permit, and those, I believe, exceed the square footage, but I don't have that information from the building department yet.
Okay, but your understanding is that that set of signs on the west side of the building does or does not conform with our ordinance?
Well, my understanding is the one that was permitted does. The ones that include the beer and wine, I don't have enough detail to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
And
All right, is the petitioner here?
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Sean Mansour. I'm the attorney on behalf of Old Woodward Tobacco. My name is Sean Mansour. I represent Marlene Mansour, who's the individual owner, who's also a part of this meeting. Marlene, would you like to introduce yourself?
You're on mute, so.
Oh, hi, I'm Marlene Mansour. I am the owner of Old Woodward Tobacco Shop.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. And yes, we're here today for a special land use to sell alcoholic beverages at the tobacco shop. We plead that you grant this request. Obviously, it's been a very difficult time for my client during COVID. Business has been down tremendously, and I think this would be a big boost to their sales. And I don't find it to be any any negative aspect on the, on the municipality.
Are there questions for the petitioner?
I can speak on the sign as it relates to the sign. If it's not conforming, we will make sure that it is. And if it has to be taken down and redone, we'll make sure that it is. That will not be an issue.
For sure.
All right.
Also, in regard to the enclosure for the the trash and recycling, that is also not an issue as well. We were just not aware of that, and my client can make sure that that's taken care of as well.
All right. Mr. Twing, this is a special land use. Is this a public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so Ms. Swanger, are there any public comments?
There were no public comments on this matter.
All right, are there, are there other questions for the petitioner?
There was one email that I will point out that is attached to the end of your packet of from, I'm not sure who who it was from at this point, but it is included and it is part of the public record. But we did get one comment.
All right.
Tim, was, was that a typo on that one? Because it says 2007, which I assume is a typo on the email that was attached.
Yes.
There was just a typo, so from honors is the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there? I go back where we were. Are there other questions for, for the petitioners? Commissioner Douglas?
Is your client going to behave themselves?
Ms. Douglas, that's a very good question, and I'd like to say yes. I'll, I'll give you some more information. My client is actually my first cousin. And part of this I'll put on myself, part of it I'll put on just miscommunication in general. If I can rewind, when we first, when they first took over that business or put that business together, they had asked me if they could sell beer and wine. And my answer was, I'm not sure. Let me go and call over to the city hall. I called over, I spoke with someone, I'm not sure which department, who directed me to the police department. So I was, I gave a call to the police department. I may have spoke to a detective lieutenant. I'm not sure who I spoke with. They indicated to me that no license was required, that they just needed a liquor or a beer and wine license from the state, that they would be all set. So I gave my client and my cousins that information that they go, they can go ahead and proceed. We quickly found out that that wasn't the case. Now, I in turn told the client that they had to remove the alcohol. We had to apply for the special land use. Truly speaking, my client thought that the city was picking on them. And they, and I know you guys weren't, in all honesty, and I tried explaining that to him. And when push came to shove, we finally, we hashed things out. We applied for the permit today. We're here today. I know he's made some mistakes. And when I say he, I mean the husband to Marlene.
He's been addressed. He's been addressed. He's been threatened, so there shouldn't be no mistakes.
Yes, I, I've known Marlene my entire life. She's a very responsible person. She's on top of her husband. She's going to make sure he doesn't make any of these mistakes again. And we want, we want to be a friend and a neighbor to the municipality, so please, we'd love to work with you guys. We, I would love to say that there's going to be no more, no more issues, but I can only say so much now.
Either me or his mistake, so I told him he has to choose. Because one more mistake, I'm out. I'm out of eating, honey.
All right. Very good. Are there other questions for the petitioners or or for Mr. Twing or or anybody else? All right, let's, there's no public comments. Let's bring it back to the commission here. Is there discussion? Is there a motion?
There's, there should be two motions, one on the special land use, and then if you do approve the special land use request, then there's one on the site plan.
And the site plan, yeah, we'll, we'll take it one at a time. So, all right. Comments?
Well, say before discussion is had, all of the beer and wine has been removed. So nothing is currently for sale. Nothing is on the sales floor. It is not until you give the client permission to sell alcoholic beverages will they do so.
Mr. Gantina?
So I I kind of struggle with this because I, I believe that the client knew exactly what they agreed to as evidenced by the affidavit that was signed. And we truly are in a situation of begging for forgiveness because they chose to not ask for the permission that was clearly documented originally. And so I struggle with it. It's, you know, it seems, in my opinion, that it was sort of willful neglect of what was required, and that puts you in this position. Not necessarily, you know, a simple miscommunication is how I feel. I'm, I'm going to have trouble saying yes to this just from that reason alone. It kind of, it seems like you kind of did your own thing regardless of the fact that it was pretty clear in what was approved originally as to what the steps were, but you chose to circle that out.
Are there other comments by the commission? I'll, I'll make a couple, two. Number one, I hate to tell you this, but I was there at your shop today. I bought some tobacco from my son, and there were plenty of bottles of alcohol out on the floor on display. Now, I didn't ask if they were for sale, but there, there was, was quite a bit of packaged alcohol sitting out on the floor. But the other comment I want to make is that for the commission, we have a basis of our determinations that are on the staff report at page four, and those are the criteria that we're to, we're to use as a standard to review this request. Certainly, I'm constipated myself about, about what's happened here, but I would remind the commissioners that that's, that's our standards. And and of course, one of the standards is about operations. That's the standard number two. But any other comments? Questions, motions, discussion? Mr. Klooster? Stop, you're, you're on mute.
Oh, okay. I will address the first item and make a motion to approve the special land use.
Is there a second? Commissioner Douglas, are you seconding?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
All right. There's some discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Klooster has none. I, I share Mr. Gantina's concerns. Obviously, my concern was indicated by the question that I asked the petitioner. They have not had a good track record here. But as, once they are a vendor of alcoholic beverages, they are going to be governed not just by the ordinances of the city of Royal Oak, but by state laws as well. And I am, I I suspect that our building department or code inspection people will be paying close attention to what they do here. And I'm confident that with the assurance of the applicant and the added scrutiny and regulation that they are going to come under, that they will behave themselves.
Yeah, I'll, oh, I'll add, I guess, a little clarification that I don't, I don't appreciate when petitioners come to us after having ignored our ordinances and rules. That leaves a bad taste in my mouth. I do appreciate that they are following our ordinances and seeking approval to do things now. I think the retail sales of packaged alcohol are fitting in the general business character of the Woodward Avenue corridor. And I, that is the sole driver of why I think the special land use is appropriate.
Other comments? I'll, I'll make a couple here. So I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Beaky, you want to?
Just a brief one. Again, having read through all of the materials, and and I just want to echo that it's, I understand this is a retroactive fit in a situation where people were being asked, I think, a couple of different times. And so I'd just like to say that we really respect our staff here in Royal Oak, and we like to have businesses that are compliant with the zoning and ordinances. And so if this goes forward, I would expect that that would be the case. Anyway, because it, it was a lot of back and forth that was kind of disappointing. But I look forward to seeing the enclosure and having things getting sorted out.
Absolutely.
Yes, my, my comment, we're going to be to some of the the listed factors. Obviously, there are other stores that sell packaged alcohol in this area, so that's not the issue. The issue is whether it'll be operated and maintained to be harmonious. Well, it's got to be operated in conformance with the ordinance is. And if there's questions, they should be sought out to the, to the proper authorities and and worked out. And if, and if it's not, that's, there's, there's reason to be concerned here. Number three will not be hazardous or disturbing to exist in use as well. It could be hazardous or disturbing if the rear of the building is not kept, you know, maintained and the enclosure isn't there. There's reasons why those ordinance are there, so there's reason to be concerned about number three. Number seven, that the, that the special land use will be consistent with the intent and purposes of this chapter, the zoning ordinance. Well, if you, if the sign is not in conformance, then it's not consistent. So I can support the motion, but, and I've heard these assurances on the record, but I do want to reemphasize that the sign has to come into conformance. The waste receptacle has come into conformance. I was, I was there today, like I said. There's quite a bit of junk in the back of the building there. I hope that's going to get cleaned up and not be a junkyard there. Those things are, are things that you have to do to be a good neighbor. And, you know, the, the ordinance apply to everybody. So there, I understand the council's comments that sometimes the clients have the wrong idea about what's going on. These are, these are across the board. If you need the variance, you can come and ask for it. But in this instance, I think you need to prove yourself by bringing yourself into compliance. Get the sign in compliance, get the dumpster in compliance, and go from there. Any further discussion? I will call for the vote. This is the first part of the, of the two steps. And this is the motion to recommend the special land use be approved. Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So vote is unanimous. Congratulations. We're going to recommend the special land use be approved. Now, the next.
Well, just, just for clarity, you, you actually are approving it.
There we are. Okay, I got mixed up with the last one.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so now we're talking about the site plan, and you presented a site plan. And Tim, do we need, do you need any?
Need a motion on the site plan. You've kind of touched on some of the staff recommendation. There's a separate, separate memo there. Basically, that they provide a site plan with all the necessary items in terms of boundaries, parcel lines, those sorts of things to comply with the submission requirements for a site plan. Number two is in regards to the waste receptacle and the enclosure for it. The remaining ones, other than the one I'll bring up, is signage. The signage is a requirement that it do, that it does comply with the sign ordinance or that they apply for variances. So their choice will be to either submit for a sign that does comply or come back to the planning commission for a variance in the future. But that's the site plan memo from staff.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner regarding the site plan? I see the petitioner would like to make a comment. Go ahead.
I just have a question about the sign. So right now, the sign, the beer and wine sign, is it not the right size? Do I, because I didn't know I had to apply for a permit for a sign because I thought the sign guy does that. Or am I wrong?
Well, the sign requires a permit. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the sign does require a permit, and a permit was issued for a sign. The permit requested, what was put up was bigger and different than what the permit was issued for.
Because I know there was two different times where he had to apply for the permit. I just want to know so I can confront him and ask him what he did, so I just don't want to tell him the wrong information.
The only sign permit I have on record is one for the tobacco store.
Not for the beer and wine?
No.
Okay, just so I know when I call him. So thank you.
All right. Are there other questions for the petitioner? Comments, motion? I guess I have a question for Mr. Twing. So this site plan, Tim, we would have to approve the site plan for them to move forward to get this plan. approve the site plan for them to move forward to get this plan reviewed and permitted, or how would this?
Yes.
Okay.
It's an integral part of the special land use.
All right. Any other comments, questions from our commission commissioners?
Motion to approve the site plan.
And that's to approve the site plan with the listed contingencies?
Correct.
Is there support, support from Mr. Gantina? Is there discussion? All right, I don't see any. Was that a hand, Ms. Beaky? Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote. We'll start with Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Kloster?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So we have approved the site plan, if I understand correctly. So congratulations. And we look forward to working with you. And we look forward to seeing the progress we talked about tonight. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
May I ask two questions of the commission? Or in terms of the receptacle enclosure, does that have to be modified and put on the site plan? Do, how do we go about getting permission to construct that?
Well, the, the approval of the site plan includes the contingency that your receptacle will have to comply. So you'll work with the building department and make sure that it does comply. And, and that's how it works. We, we don't, we don't have the particulars here.
Okay.
You'll, you'll make sure that it.
We'll reach out to the building department then.
Yes.
Very well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a special land use and revised final special development site plan to allow massage therapy, microblading, and medical spa services as an accessory to the hair salon, Sola Salon at 486 North Main. I assume that's the first floor of the building there. Mr. Twing?
You are correct. It's the first floor of the building just north of the Hyatt Place Hotel on the east side of North Main, between Pingery and University. It is a tenant space in there. As we indicated in the staff report, the salon has been approved for that use on that floor. They are proposing uses that, under city ordinance, are considered adult-oriented commercial enterprises, both of those being a massage establishment and microblading as a definition under the tattoo ordinance. That's why it's in front of you this evening as far as the special land use and requiring a special land use permit.
Right.
There's really no modifications to the, the site itself. There is potential need for a variance from the zoning board of appeals if you grant the special land use. And that's in relation to the distance requirement for adult-oriented uses from churches or places of worship and/or residential districts. So if you do choose to do the special land use permit, grant that, they would also need to obtain the appropriate variances from the board of appeals.
All right. And, all right, but those are, those are not design issues. Those are, those are use issues.
Those are distance issues from the setback from either a church or from residential property.
All right. All right, is the petitioner here?
Yes, I'm right here.
And can you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, my name is Scott Dittsworth. I'm one of the partners of Sola Salon Studios. And you want to give, want me to give a brief overview of who we are, what we do, that sort of thing?
You, you may do that. And then you're gonna hopefully present to us why, why these requests should be granted, of course, why you need them and why they should be granted. But yes, start with, start with something about you.
Okay, perfect. So Sola Salons, we've got, by year end, we'll have 548 locations in 44 states. We've got six, Royal Oak will be our 16th location, the 12th one in the Detroit metro area. We're basically, in a nutshell, executive suites for primarily cosmetologists. So anything that falls under the cosmetology umbrella. We have seen a demand for our product with primarily microblading, but here and there, massage therapy, and also med spa. And that's the reason why, you know, we applied for this special land use permit. Out of the 17,000 studio operators that we have nationwide, we run at about 85% hairstylists. And then we have accessory uses such as estheticians, brow techs, eyelash techs, that sort of thing that run in the, in the neighborhood of 15% and make up the entire facility. So we do like to have a comprehensive offering at each, each one of our facilities. And that's why we are requesting that microblading, massage therapy, and med spa be part of our offering there at the Royal Oak location.
Can you just explain, for those of us who don't know, what is med spa?
So med spa would be, you know, injectables, botox type of, of, you know, applications, fillers, that sort of thing. What we're seeing is that doctors are using our facilities as kind of satellite offices and putting nurses in a studio at our facility. Because they, they get a lot of cross-traffic from the, from the hairstylist in our facilities. It's a rather large facility. This one in particular is 8,000 square feet. It'll house 37 studios. And then we have six studios that are dedicated for spa uses. So one thing I did want to make clear on the staff report is that we're not just a hair salon. So the uses that are regulated by Laura in the state of Michigan, things such as skincare, things that are not semi-permanent in nature, like microblading, so like brows, eyelashes, that sort of thing. Those would be a permitted use as it stands now in our spa studios. But, you know, we would just like to have the opportunity to lease primarily to microbladers because that is a semi, semi-permanent application to eyebrows. And then while we were at it, we, we thought we would, you know, see if we can get massage therapy and med spa added as well.
All right, are there questions for the petitioner? Well, Ms. Beaky?
Just wondering, so when you rent out each of the, the spaces that you have, yours, your suites, the same person rents the same spot, so that becomes their permanent spot? Is that how the?
That is correct. So each, each studio is independently owned and operated by the studio operator. We, in essence, are a landlord to, you know, we're the master lessie for the, the property, and then we sublease the space to each studio operator. So they're an independent business owner. They'll be getting a business license from the city of Royal Oak. They'll also be getting establishment licenses from either county, city, or state, depending on the use. So yeah, everybody's independently owned and operated. They'll all have fictitious business names and all of that sort of thing.
So just to follow up with that, so Tim, so someone who would have an adult, what we call an adult business, a massage or whatever, they'd have to get a different license from the city or, or just their state license?
Well, they're not, we're, we're not talking about licensing. In this case, we're issuing a, a special land use permit. It's not a license. They may need licenses from the county health department to do a variety of things. And they'd get those from the appropriate entities.
Right. At the time that they would have that business, that would be their own, that would be separate.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I have a question if I can jump in. So if I understand correctly, you, you have these suites that you rent out to practitioners. And these microblading, massage therapy, and med spa are part of the market that you, you might market these leased spaces to?
That's correct. I mean, primarily, so we do have, you know, out of the 17,000 studio operators that we have in the 44 states currently, 85% are hairstylists across our entire spectrum. The accessory uses, the other 15% are comprised of primarily estheticians, other cosmetology uses. But we like to have a comprehensive service offering at each facility. So it becomes a one-stop shop for whoever's looking for personal services. So microblading has become a huge trend in our facilities. It, it basically, it would fall under the cosmetology umbrella, but it's considered tattooing because it's semi-permanent in nature. But it has to do with just eyebrows. And so that's the primary one. Every now and again, I would say it's less than half percent of the, the 17,000 studio operators we have are massage therapists. I do own and operate the location of Rochester Hills, and we do have one massage therapist there. And then med spa, we are seeing an uptick in demand for, for studios at our facilities from doctors who like to set up a nurse in our facility. It's a very high-end facility. And it lends itself well to the, the med spa umbrella. So we are seeing that as well.
Okay. I just wonder, I mean, microblading, that seems to make sense. I would even wonder why you maybe wouldn't do nails or something. It would be close to that sort of thing. Massage therapy and med spa seem a little bit farther outside of that cosmetology envelope to me. Am I, am I wrong about that?
Well, it depends on how you look at it. I mean, typically, we don't run into this variance issue or special land use permit issue because we typically lease space in shopping centers that fall under the general business district, the zoning districts. And so we rarely run into this where this is, I believe, I, I forget the exact zoning on this particular parcel. But we typically don't run into this issue. So, I mean, I guess that's up for debate. I'll let you guys decide that. But definitely, microblading would be the one that, that would, would be the one that we would like to see approved if, if I had to choose between, between the three that we're, we're debating right now.
All right. Thank you. Tim, is this, this is a special land use, so this is also a public hearing, yes?
That's correct.
Are there, Ms. Twing, are there any public comments?
Mr. Karloski, who called in, did leave a comment regarding this matter as well. Let me play that for you now.
6 North Main, Street Project 201224, in particular, medical spa services. Exactly what are we talking about here? Our massage therapy in particular. Salon is one thing. A massage therapy operation has a great deal of possible issues with it, particularly that close to residential neighborhood. Thank you.
The other one?
Comment, yeah, just Mr. Karloski tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there further questions for the petitioner? And or, or a motion or discussion from the commissioners? Commissioner Douglas?
So if there are issues with, so the, the model here, as I understand it, is common in the, in the beauty industry, that is, an operator rents stalls or chairs to stylists. And, and basically, that's what, what this applicant is doing. So each of those operators is licensed by their respective industries. How do we, and I guess this question is addressed to Mr. Twing, once we approve this adult, this adult use, are we approving it by the, the solo, the applicant? And what is their relationship with the actual provider? And where is our control?
Well, our enforcement would be against generally the property owner, the tenant of the building. So whoever controls the primary lease. If, if there's a licensee under that, in terms of enforcement, we're going, we're going to the property owner and the, and the primary person that holds the lease on the, on the space. If they have a separate arrangement with a subtenant or a sublease, the city doesn't care. We're, we're not chasing them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so Mr. Dittsworth, you're, you're a tenant, you, you rent that large 8,000 square foot space and you're subleasing it to the, to your practitioner?
Correct. We, we call it a license agreement, so it's not an actual lease agreement. It's more of a license agreement, arrangement. So we control the space and they don't have all the, you know, the legalities and stuff that, that a lease agreement would have, similar to the one that I have with, with, you know, NABU hotels and all of that. So it's, it's a little more basic. But they are required to have all of their licensing, establishment license, all their city permits, whatever they need in order to operate legally in that municipality, they have to have to operate in our space.
Okay, Tim, just a question that I have is that the special land use then would, if it was granted, it would continue until such time is that Sola Salons was, was no longer the leasing the space, I take. It doesn't run with the land, in other words?
Well, yes, it does. I mean, it could be a new owner, as long as they're operating under the same operating plan that you've approved this evening. It could change owners of the space. It could be someone else in there. And we would enforce it based on what you approved this evening.
Okay, but if there's somebody, if, if the salon left 10 years from now and a, and a gym came in or a grocery store came in, it, it, this would no longer be a.
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. Are there other questions or comments from the commissioners? Ms. Beaky?
I was just gonna make the comment because I know in Royal Oak, and this is a, I think, a period in which I was not living in Royal Oak, that there were issues with a massage place of business being, doing some illicit things and, and being, and that's why massages in adult business in Royal Oak, as I understand. From the description of the kinds of people that are working in this kind of salon, I would be inclined to think that both the med spa and the massage therapy seem relatively appropriate, assuming they're not the kind of illicit business that had to be shut down some time back. So, because I, I feel like they would be consistent to your earlier point, Gary.
Okay, well, all right. Let me, let me ask a collateral question there, Mr. Twing, real quick. Approving the special land use would necessarily approve all these uses. We couldn't pick and choose out of them, could we?
It, it's going to approve the ones that are specifically listed as part of, of your packet this evening and their plan of operation.
All right. We, would we be entitled if we, if we were so inclined to say, okay, we'll approve microblading, but not massage therapy? Could we do that?
Certainly.
Excuse me?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Gantina, I think you had your hand up.
I just had a question. The, so the licensing model versus leasing model you just referred to. Would you say that, that lends you as sort of the master leasing or the building owner more control over the spaces themselves and ultimately more accountability? So I think there was some questions, concerns around, you know, how do we track down violators of things? It sounds to me that the model you're talking about as a licensee versus a landlord really puts a lot more of that control and accountability and responsibility into you as the owner, not necessarily the individual tenant. Fair to say?
That is fair to say. Yes, I would agree with that. And that, that's the reason we structure it that way. Because we want more control of the space. And with more control of the space, obviously, we take on more accountability, so.
Any questions or comments?
There are two actions again, one under the special land use and then a and then a basic site plan. There's not much changing to the site plan.
All right, um, Mr. Klooster, I see a hand up.
Yes, uh, just just a clarification, um, because the way our ordinance classifies microblading as tattooing, are we, is this special land use specific enough that it applies only to microblading and not all tattooing?
Uh, that that's how I would apply it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question, I I, thanks for asking that. I'm sure, I'm sure there's people listening who want that, would want that clarification. Other comments, this, or Commissioner Douglas?
So the the fact that they have med spa activities here is irrelevant to us because that is not a function that's uh controlled by our adult uh use definitions, correct, Mr. Twing?
That's correct.
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special land use um as proposed.
Support.
For Ms. Beeky, is there further discussion?
Uh, I'll I'll speak briefly to the motion. Uh, we heard a a caller call in and express concern about a massage parlor and in adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And I can point to multiple chiropractors' offices around Royal Oak um adjacent to residential neighborhoods that offer massage, not to mention gyms and physical therapy offices. Um, this is a very benign function, unlike what Royal Oak saw twenty twenty-five years ago. Um, and I think it, the action we're having to take today demonstrates the wisdom of uh taking a second look at our overall adult use ordinance um to examine the functions, particularly of of tattooing and therapeutic massage. Um, so, I, but that's down the road.
Any other comments, discussion? All right, um, seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. This would be to approve of Commissioner Douglas's motion to approve the special land use as proposed with, I think there are some contingencies in there.
Well, there was permission to go to the ZBA.
No.
There was permission to to go seek the variances from the zoning board.
Okay, that is, that is in the special land use?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and that's that's part of the proposal. So, calling for the vote, Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Beeky?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Klooster?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so your special land use, uh, we are recommending approval for that.
Um, again, you are approving it.
Approving it, I gotta get these things straight, sorry about that. Hmm. We approved the special land use, and now, congratulations, but we've got to go to the site plan here. And this is um a, let me get it up here.
The only couple of items on there that are new uh or relevant are, one, uh, it's contingent upon the zoning board granting uh those minimum setback variance requirements. And then two, compliance and continued compliance with the plan of operation is submitted. The others are simple, uh, our standard contingencies and continued compliance with the other site plan issues previously approved.
Okay, I just have an arcane question then. Um, the setback, I mean, isn't the setback, they they haven't changed the envelope of the building. Isn't the setback something that we approved when we approved the building at uh footprint?
It's a distance back from the church, meaning that
Oh, okay.
The use you just approved has, uh, there's a provision to be a thousand feet away or a hundred and fifty feet away. And so the use, it's the distance to that use.
Okay, thank you. All right, any discussion about the uh site plan or question for the petitioners other than, uh, I assume you work with Mr. Stempian because his deal is on the drawing?
Me?
Yeah, I was hoping to see him tonight, but uh I don't, he wasn't needed.
Uh, yeah, I worked with ZA Design Build. Mr. Stepien, I'm not sure I know who that is. Is that in the city of Royal Oak?
Uh, he's, he's an architect.
He's an architect, gotcha. Uh, that was, I had a design build from from ZA Design Build, so he must have used Stepien a long way.
Very good, thanks. Yeah, um, any other questions, discussion, motion?
I'll I'll move to approve as conditioned.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Beeky. So this is a motion by Mr. Gantina to approve the revised special, final special redevelopment site plan with the listed contingency, second by Ms. Beeky. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote, starting again with Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
Ms. Beeky?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is unanimous passage. Congratulations, thank you very much for your presentation and good luck with your endeavor.
Thank you, everyone, awesome, have a nice night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, next item of business is the special land use and site plan will allow retail sales of packaged alcoholic beverage and outdoor display and sales uh for the automobile filling station at one six two one East eleven mile. Mr. Twing?
Uh, this site is on the northwest corner of eleven and Campbell. Uh, it is an existing uh filling station and convenience store. Uh, as you indicated, the uh petitioner is proposing to establish retail sales of alcoholic beverages at this location uh under the zoning ordinance of neighborhood business and 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 basically all of the commercial zoning districts. Alcohol sales is considered a special land use. Uh, that's the basis for the request for the special land use permit this evening. Um, well, a convenience store is also a permitted use in neighborhood business. Um, automobile filling stations are not, however, um, they're not making any changes uh to the filling station. Um, so there is no uh non-conforming issue with the filling station itself. It's simply a discussion of the uh special land use request as related to the uh alcohol sales. Um, as we did also indicate in the staff report, um, the petitioner has submitted uh elevations and and plans that include some outdoor display and sales areas. Um, we have no record in the planning office going back to the prior planning commission approvals in two thousand seven, uh nineteen ninety-three and nineteen seventy-seven that permitted any outdoor display and sales. Um, we've also noticed for that regarding the potential for uh those those to continue if you were so choose to uh grant the uh what's considered transient or temporary outdoor display and sales items. So those are the two items under the uh special land use report. Um, the site plan memo, um, again, is the, there are no major changes to the site being proposed. The only uh added contingency beyond our standard contingencies is whether or not the uh planning commission wants to allow outside uh display and sales. And if you do, as part of the special land use permit, uh, we would ask that the petitioner provide a site plan that identifies those areas specifically on that plan. Uh, that's all I have unless you have questions with me.
Yeah, just to clarify, I was there today, and I I can't remember what the outdoor displays were, except I think they had firewood there. Uh, so what you would be looking for and is is a site plan that shows where these displays would be designated and
Correct, I believe, yeah, I believe there's currently uh out outside, there's some wood, I believe. And and again, I haven't been by there recently, but it may include some propane uh tanks and an ice, an ice dispenser. What we would look for is those to be added to the uh the site plan in terms of location and size.
Okay, not, they don't need that for the special land use, they need it for the site.
Well, they need it for both, but they'd have to add it to the site plan.
Okay, so it would be a condition on the special land use.
Yes.
Okay, all right, is the petitioner here? It looks like they are. Would you kindly introduce yourself and uh tell us about your request?
Yes, good evening, my name is Jessica Hallmark. I'm the, an attorney with the law firm of Atkinson, Need, Allen and Rentrup. And our law firm represents the petitioner, Noah Jamil, who's also joining us this evening. Um, as was said, Mr. Jamil is applying for a special land use approval for packaged alcohol sales and site plan approval for the Marathon gas station located at sixteen twenty-one East eleven mile road. Mr. Jamil's formed two new companies which are seeking to purchase the Marathon gas station. And following the purchase, he would like to be able to sell beer, wine and liquor for off-premises consumption. Specifically, he's planning to carry higher-end liquor, fine wine and craft beer. He's not proposing any changes to the exterior of the gas station. If approved, he's proposing some minor changes to the interior of the premises to facilitate the sale of alcohol as shown on the site plan that we submitted. Um, I know you're aware that under the ordinance, there are a number of factors that the planning commission is to consider in granting special land use approval for packaged alcohol sales. Um, we address those factors in our written submission, and I know you, they were addressed as well in the report you received from the planning commission. So, um, I won't, I won't go through each of those unless you have specific questions for us on any of those points. But I did want to take a few minutes to talk generally about my client and his experience um and operating history. Mr. Jamil has been operating gas stations since two thousand thirteen, and he has operated liquor-licensed gas stations since two thousand sixteen. He currently has three other licensed gas station locations in Howell, Roseville and Plymouth. In nearly five years of operating with liquor licenses at those locations, Mr. Jamir, Jamil has not had a single liquor license violation, a tobacco violation or a Michigan lottery violation. He's an experienced operator, he has a clean operating history. Um, in short, this is, this is the guy that that you want uh operating these these types of premises in your community. Um, the reason he is so successful in operating these licensed businesses and maintaining a clean operating record is that he has policies in place to ensure that his employees are following the rules and not selling alcohol to minors or anybody who's physically intoxicated. Uh, he has a hiring packet for all of his employees that include informa- includes information about the company's alcohol policies and the consequences to the employee if he or she fails to follow all of those policies. The employees are all required to complete tips training, um, which is not something that is required by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for an off-premises licensee, but but he has his employees do so anyway. Um, all of the employees sign an acknowledgement form every month regarding the company's alcohol policies. The stores have point-of-sale systems that prompt the employee to enter um a a date of birth or scan and identification for the customer before they can complete the alcohol transaction. And if they don't do that, or if the customer is underage, then the the point-of-sale system won't allow them to complete the transaction. Um, and they, the company also has a policy that anybody who appears to be under the age of forty has to be carded, and they they do sort of spot checks where they'll send in folks to to try to purchase alcohol and and ensure that that they're carded if they appear to be under forty years old. Um, I want to briefly mention as well that, um, a- as was mentioned, um, my client would like to continue to have the the outdoor display areas. Um, they have some items out there, they have washer fluid, firewood, propane, you know, those types of items that you might typically find outside of a gas station. Um, I think that the the plan is to to have something that looks pretty similar to what's there now, or perhaps even even a little bit less than than what's there now. Um, we understand that that's um, that's something that requires special land use approval as well. So we would ask for that special land use approval this evening too. Um, and with that, we're we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Um, I got a quick question, so is your client operating this uh facility at the moment? Is he already operating here?
No, so it it's currently operating as a gas station. It's under uh different ownership right now, and uh we are in the process of uh negotiating a a contract to acquire the gas station, both the real estate and the 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 business assets of the gas station.
All right, um, I, so I have a question for Mr. Twing. Is that, is is that something, I suppose, that something can be done? A a prospective owner seeking a special uh land use, it's not exactly like a site plan. Uh, what's the effect of of this being a prospective uh owner-operator rather than the actual current owner-operator?
Well, it's, uh, he does have a property interest in it in the sense that he's going through the process of acquiring it. The approval for a special land use permit is going to be associated with this request. Um, and again, uh, if someone else were, if 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 he were to sell it uh or bring it forth, uh, someone else could operate it in the same fashion um, under the same terms. Uh, but I I guess that would be my answer to your question. It would, it's predicated on your action this evening and and in this in this gentleman.
So, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I can briefly respond to that as well. So I should point out too that we do have a a signed letter of intent with the current owner of the property, and the current owner of the property signed the, our application for the the special land use permit. So, um, so he's aware that that we're doing this.
Okay, if, Tim, if the, if if the commission grants a special land use and Mr. Jamil never purchases the property and never operates it, is the current owner then entitled to the benefit of the special land use?
It, uh, the special land use runs with the land, um, pursuant to the documents and the approvals this evening. Um, you don't grant special land use to people, you grant it to the property. If this site is appropriate for a location to sell packaged liquor, it's appropriate whether it's this gentleman or another one.
All right, well, I I guess I just want to be clear that that we may never get Mr. Jamil as our operator if we if we grant this. I understand the the basis of determination there, one of them is operation, and that's one of the pitches we just heard. So I'm just making it clear for the record that we're anticipating a a purchase, but it might not happen. And then we would still be granting the special land use based on the other factors, whatever factors we we consider. That's what, that's what I understand. All right, are there questions for the petitioner? Other questions for the petitioner from the commissioners? Um, this is special land use, so it's a public hearing. Uh, Ms. Swanger, is there any, are there any public comments?
There were no public comments regarding this matter.
All right.
You did have one email that again is attached to the end of your packet, uh, and as part of that document, it is part of the public record.
Okay, and and just I'll ask another question to the petitioner. What I understand to be said there that is that you don't have a problem uh with a special land use approval that requires the site plan to uh add any, you know, outdoor display areas that you intend to to operate?
We do, we do not have a problem with um with including that on the site plan. And my understanding um is that that we would be revising the site plan and submitting that to to the department staff. Is that correct?
Uh, we'd be, as soon as the site plan is approved, you would have with the contingency.
Okay, yes, and and yes, and we understand that, and that's fine.
All right, any other uh questions, comments, motion by uh any of the planning commissioners? Commissioner Douglas, that didn't look like a hand. Ms. Beeky?
I have a question, and and I understand, so we're, we're being asked to grant special land use on a property uh that also has many special land uses, because already the gas station was not something that would originally be expected to be there, but is because of all the um but is because of all the continuation of that permission. My question is, in Royal Oak, and I don't know if this is easy to answer, is there a cap on liquor licenses? Or what's the relationship between the liquor license and the special land use in terms of numbers of places that sell alcohol in Royal Oak? Has that ever been a discussion? I've not been aware of it, and I'm just curious how that functions.
So the reason that we need special land use approval for this is because the zoning ordinance states that any sort of packaged alcohol sales in the city of Royal Oak is a special land use. I think what you're asking specifically is about a quota on these licenses?
Correct. I'm asking, I guess, Tim, or I understand why we're being asked for the special land use. I'm wondering, on the alcohol sales perspective, if there is a quota in Royal Oak or any limitations on it?
Well, my comment on it, and I don't know if Mark List wants to jump in, but my comment on it is the MLCC rules change too often for me to keep up with them. So whether they currently have a quota, there used to be a number that was assigned in terms of licenses, and they keep altering how that's dealt with, similar to Class C licenses. At one point, there was a certain number assigned to Royal Oak. Then you could transfer in from other locations, then you could transfer in from out county. It's, at this point, it changes so much that I can't answer for you what the MLCC rules are.
Okay, thank you. That helps clarify some. And then I guess the question to the petitioner would be, the one inquiry we had was the church across, that's, I guess, is kitty corner from this location? If you've had any interaction with them, because they seem concerned about the idea of having liquor sold near their church, which we do have a distance requirement of 500 feet, and I guess the gas station is closer than that to them, if you have any discussions with them?
Well, for clarification, too, we do not have a distance requirement. That's a distance requirement from the MLCC. The church is referring to MLCC rules. They're not, those are not City of Royal Oak requirements that he's referencing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
He's referencing something under the MLCC rules, and the actions under that are related to the MLCC commission, not the planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
Your evaluation here is under the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I would like to speak to the comments about the statute because they were not entirely accurate. And I want to circle back also to answer your questions regarding the quota. So the, there are, the SDM licenses, which are for the sale of beer and wine for off-premises consumption, are subject to a quota, and there are SDM licenses available in the City of Royal Oak quota. SDD licenses, specially designated distributor licenses, which are for the sale of liquor to go for off-premises consumption, those are also subject to a quota, and there are none available in the City of Royal Oak quota. So we would have to find one that would be available for purchase or otherwise available under the statute to bring into the city. So that would be something we would be bringing in. With regard to the distance requirement, there is a provision of the statute that talks about if a licensed premises is within 500 feet of a church or school. But what the statute says is that the church or school has an opportunity to raise an objection to the Liquor Control Commission, and then the Liquor Control Commission has to have a hearing about it, and they can waive, they can waive any sort of requirement that the licensed premises be more than 500 feet from the church or school. So it's not an absolute prohibition. It's, you know, you have to go through a hearing. It's something that would be considered at the Liquor Control Commission level. It's not a requirement that's in the city ordinance.
All right, so Ms. Grantina.
So to Ms. Bicki's point, and also touching on Mr. Casada's point, any special land use permit that we may grant is really irrelevant to the issuance of a liquor license from the MLCC. They're really two totally separate things. I just want to make quite a clear point.
Exactly correct, yes. So you're not, you are not considering whether or not to grant a license to sell beer, wine, and liquor at this location? You're simply considering whether somebody could apply for a license for this location? That would, and whether that would comply with the city's ordinances?
That's what the discussion is about. So I'll pitch in some of the discussion. I mean, this, this facility is like many, many facilities you see all over the place that has beer and wine sales, and they're not changing anything because they already have the facility to simply switch out soda pop or Gatorade or whatever and put beer in the cooler or on the floor. So I think the facility itself, and it's also right across the street from a party store that sells beer and wine, and I think they might even sell hard liquor, I don't know. But certainly, it's harmonious in the sense that it's, there's a competing facility right across the street, and it's certainly designed like many of these things, so that's not a problem. And I think otherwise, it's fairly difficult to make an argument that any of the conditions, they haven't met them adequately because these sorts of facilities sell beer and wine all over the place. And the location, I guess, would be the only issue for me, and I don't think it's an issue. Again, there's another competing facility right across the street to the east, so I don't see any basis myself to deny the request, and they'll have to go get their license and hopefully buy the property and be successful at that. But as far as the special land use, seems like a party store to me. Any further discussion, comment, motion?
Again, there's two motions, one to approve the special land uses and then a second on the site plan.
Thank you, that's right. Starting with the special land use. Mr. Klooster?
Approve the special land use permit?
Oh, so I think that that was Mr. Grantina. Was that a second by Mr. Klooster simultaneously? Or a comment?
No, not a second. It'll have to be a comment. I support the special land use for the package, the retail sale of packaged alcohol. I do not support the outdoor sales.
All right, is that also a motion? Or, because you guys spoke at the same time, I'm sorry, and Mr. Grantina made a motion, I believe, to approve the special land use as proposed, and you've made a comment that you would like to move to approve it without the outdoor displays. But Mr. Grantina went first, so as far as I can tell. So I think we got to start with him, but I'd like you to explain your comments, so.
I'll withdraw my motion to give Mr. Klooster an opportunity to talk about his alternative motion a little bit more.
All right, here's Mr. Klooster.
Perhaps the planning commission can just make motions separately on them. One to deal with the packaged liquor and liquor sales, and one to deal with the outdoor display, and then you can have a vote on each up or down, just separate the two.
All right, so we got to go back to square one. Mr. Grantina, are you, can somebody reissue their motion or re-present their motion?
So just to make sure I'm understanding this between correctly, I think we did what he just said. We just sort of did it simultaneously, so we need to clarify. My motion was to approve the special land use as a singular motion. I think we need to take action on that before any other motions on the outdoor side, is correct?
Well, I think what I just heard from Mr. Twing is we certainly can do that. So we're going to make sure I'm clear as we discuss the motion that Mr. Grantina's motion is only to approve the special land use as it relates to the sale of packaged alcohol?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Okay, is there a discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I just want to thank the attorney for a very thorough presentation. She took the conditions required of a special land use and addressed each of them specifically, and we seldom see that from applicants, and I think that very much helped her client's endeavor.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote on Mr. Grantina's motion. Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Bicki?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Grantina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, so we have approved the special land use for the sale of packaged alcohol at this property. Now, the next issue is about the outdoor displays. Mr. Klooster, I seek your counsel.
I will make a motion to deny the special land use for the outdoor sales.
Is there a second? Mr. Grantina said a second. All right, is there a discussion? Well, I think these, I'll have a little bit of discussion. I think these outdoor displays, they're part and parcel of these sorts of facilities. I'm wondering why we would deny this use for this particular location when it certainly is something that is approved or at least practiced all over the city. So I'd have a hard time supporting that, but my ears are open. Commissioner Douglas?
I agree with Mr. Casada. I will be voting against this motion.
Any other comments or discussion?
Mr. Klooster, could you speak to it a bit as far as?
Yeah, so I think being, being something that's practiced is different than something that is appropriate. I know it's done almost everywhere at these locations. I don't think that necessarily means that that is the right type of, right type of use of the property. I think the outdoor sales, even in the instances where they are indicated on plans and do go through the correct processes of being rightfully approved by municipalities, tend to very quickly fall into disorganized, cluttered chaos that typically grow outside of the defined bounds, outside of the defined items, and do not lend to the general attractiveness of the property, the general fitting with the character of the use, and that's kind of the basis of where I stand on outdoor sales for a facility like this.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, reaction to that? Well, I'll just say this. I can't disagree with Mr. Klooster that that does happen. They look cluttered. And in fact, in a perfect world, I think you're right, we wouldn't have them or we'd have them very highly disciplined. I think what we're asking this petitioner to do is to place it on the site plan, impose some discipline on themselves, and let us also as well monitor it. So I think this situation may be an opportunity to improve the situation. I feel uncomfortable going down a new road. If we're going to do what Mr. Klooster suggests, I think that's a master plan zoning ordinance issue. I think people expect to walk up and grab a propane tank, and they've gotten used to it. So I'm uncomfortable with experimenting on this, on this petitioner, but that's just my view. Mr. Klooster?
So I'll argue that point, that it is a special land use requirement within the ordinance, so this falls perfectly within what we can and should do. If, I would say, at my time on the planning commission, there have been very few instances where refueling stations have come through with special land use requests to do outdoor sales. They just sort of happen. And so I think we're not setting new precedent here. We are following the ordinance to the letter of the law by reviewing a special land use request to do outdoor sales.
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I have the opportunity to respond briefly to this?
Certainly.
I think I would just add to that that by picking this particular instance to say that this particular applicant who is coming before the planning commission to seek approvals for the things that he wants to do, by, in essence, penalizing him for doing that, it puts him at a competitive disadvantage over other gas station owners who have these uses that are not approved, and they're being allowed to have them, which is, my understanding is the case now.
And I totally understand that as an arguing point. The purview of this commission is not enforcement of our ordinance. The purview of this commission is to review ordinance items that come before us and respond to them as the ordinance allows. This being a special land use, outdoor sales is not allowed by right. It is a special land use that requires particular review. I would be cautious to say that we're singling out this particular potential user or current user, and this is part of the process of going for a special land use is looking at the specifics of a situation.
Other comments? Mr. Grantina?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate some things that Mr. Klooster said in the sense that just because it's happening or we've accepted it elsewhere doesn't mean that it's necessarily a good decision per se. At the same time, I think that's why we have a planning commission. You know, his objections and my objections don't necessarily make the call. It's a motion to deny that's on the table. I agree. I don't think it... I've seen very many examples where that's been maintained use very well. It tends to grow or have a little less discipline to it than I'd like to see. I just, I don't necessarily think it's a good use of that space. But again, at the same time, these are just two opinions on this whole commission, and I don't think that we're singling anyone out. I agree with Mr. Klooster that we're simply applying special land use conditions to something that's been brought forward to us. Others that maybe are doing the same thing, that haven't brought that to us, we can't speak to that. This is in front of us, and this is what we're speaking to.
I guess I would say, since I was a little surprised by the position, not that I entirely disagree with, but I would want to look at the master plan and some of the other basis of what our, you know, our decision-making is. I mean, do we have a master plan that intends to outlaw outdoor displays at convenience stores and gas stations? I don't know that that is part of it. If it is, well, that's one thing. If the master plan is, intends to control those things and improve those things, perhaps limit those things, well, that's a different story. So again, I'm not prepared to start tonight with that. May be something that you've started the ball rolling that needs a lot more consideration, and I would endorse doing that, but I'm... Uh, and I would endorse doing that, but I'm, I'm not going to be able to support, uh, the motion to that. There further discussion? All right, well, I, oh, Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just point to, um, the basis for determination of a special land use and review those seven items. And as a commission, make sure that you feel like that has been outdoor sales at this location satisfying those requirements.
Well, I think that's a, that, that is the right approach. And I think a lot of these have to do with relationships to surrounding properties. And in this case, we have a party store across the street and we have a gas station to the south. And I believe the gas station in the south, I didn't bother to check on the party store, but I think the gas station in the south also has outdoor displays there. Again, maybe not the best, uh, thing that we'd like to see, but it is, it is something that's been approved. And like I said, what, if, if that's, if that's the, uh, direction the city wants to go, and I think there should be some signal to that before we start denying people something that's otherwise routine. That's just my reaction to it. And again, it gives us an opportunity to control it. Because, well, let's, let's work, worry about your motion first here. So is there further discussion on Mr. Klooster's motion? It's well, well thought out and articulated and advocated motion. If there isn't, I'm gonna call for the vote. This is a vote to deny land use for outdoor display areas at this property. All right, I'm gonna start with Ms. Hunt.
No.
You are voting against Mr. Klooster's?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Ms. Beaky?
Uh, no, and I'll make one comment. My main, uh, hesitation to impose that at this point is that it, they, there are actual outdoor displays at the current functioning gas station. Otherwise, I take a lot of, uh, I appreciate much what he's saying in general in terms of this kind of outdoor display and special land use, um, outside of that.
All right, Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I am a no, so the motion fails four to two. Um, is there another motion? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the special land use for, um, outdoors, uh, outdoor display and sales.
And, um, Mr. Twing, does, as, as written here, the requirement to add the outdoor display areas to the site plan, that's already been part of our, it had, that's what we're voting on here. Just, I gotta make sure I'm clear myself, so.
So you're voting on the use, uh, your next, your next item will be voting on the site plan. And under that, you'll, you'll require that they submit a plan that identifies the locations.
Okay, isn't that part of this though? Wouldn't that be part of the site plan approval to the contingency that they, they update it? No?
You're approving the use of outdoor sales at this location. That's what the special land use permit's gonna do. You're gonna allow them to, to do outdoor displays and temporary uses here. The site plan, the next item will say where, where and how that occurs.
All right, very good. Just, just clarifying the, the motions on the table. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hunt. Is there further discussion? All right. Don't think there is any, uh, we'll, we'll proceed with the roll call. Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
No.
Mr. Klooster?
No.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes, uh, special land use for outdoor display areas is approved. And now we move on to the site plan. Mr. Twing, uh, keep us on track here, will you?
Uh, very, very simply, uh, the petitioner, item number one, under that is, uh, the petitioner shall submit a revised site plan to review, for review and approval of the planning division, identifying all areas of outdoor displaying sales. Other than that, it's their standard contingencies, because no other, no other items are, uh, changing on the plan.
Is the, this question, is the site plan then just have to show the areas? Or does it have to show anything else about the display? Is they, can they put anything there as long as we approve the, the location?
Um, y- yes, they can, it can change from a pile of wood to, uh, something else. It could be mulch, uh, as long as it stays within the location that, uh, uh, has been identified. Uh, they can change that operation. And that's true of, that's true of any outdoor display and sales that's been approved at other locations.
Do we already have ordinances in place to, uh, govern the maintenance and management of the outdoor displays?
Well, it is an enforcement issue. The, the maintenance and management is getting it on your site plan, uh, identifying where it's supposed to occur. And when it occurs outside of those areas, uh, then it's an enforcement issue.
Our, um, Ms. Beaky?
But, but what about the condition and the aesthetic quality of the displays? Because we spend a lot of time on signs and such, but what about displays outdoors in terms of the, not just what it is, not, not just where it physically is, but how it's organized?
Well, if it's in disrepair and, 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 uh, and let's say the bags are all broken or something, then, then yes, it's a maintenance issue under the property maintenance code. Uh, but an aesthetics issue is your opinion of how something looks and mine is totally different. So I, we don't get into aesthetics other than property maintenance things.
So, Mr. Gantina, go ahead.
I just have a question around, um, under which provision it would regulate what items can be sold in the outdoor sales area?
There is none. If they want to put propane tanks in a location that's identified for outdoor display, they can. If they want to put mulch in that area, they can. If they want to put pumpkins in that area, they can. If they want to put flowers in that area, they can. It's not a, it's not a plan of, of what is on sale. You don't regulate what they sell inside the store. So you're not gonna regulate what they sell outside the store, um, in those locations.
So ask an extreme, they ask, ask the question in the extreme, I suppose. So a, a newsstand of a rack full of adult magazines would be allowed to be sold in an outdoor sales area there? If, as long as it was, um, that area, within the area that was approved on the site plan?
That's falls under the adult oriented business activity and would be regulated under a different provision.
Okay, so my point really is there is some regulation to what is actually able to be sold there. It's not necessarily wide.
Right.
Mr. Klooster?
Um, just a question of procedure. Uh, so we've just approved, um, the special land use for outdoor sales. Is that, and we're asking the petitioners to submit a site plan that would indicate the locations and quantities of outdoor sales areas? Is that something that will come back before this commission? Or is that, um, administratively reviewed? And under what guidelines define how large and how many?
Um, well, if, if you approve the staff memo, it'll be done administratively. Um, what we will look at is where they're proposing to do it. Obviously, it cannot be in areas that are required for pedestrian access. It can't be in areas where, uh, traffic flow is required. It can't be, it can't take up other site plan areas. Um, so it's fairly limited in terms of where they can, uh, display items on, on a site. Um, so if it, if it interrupts and something else, we'll reject their proposal.
I have a question.
If you want to see it back, I'll, I'll bring it back. But I, I think it's a minor item that we can deal with administratively.
Well, yes, that sort of is what, what my question was going, Mr. Twing. Seems to me there's three issues. Where this display issues are, how many of them there are, and how large they are. Are those things that the staff and the department feel should be left to their, their discretion? Or is that something the planning commission should give you direction?
No, I, I think you can look at the site plan. If you, if you wanted to look at the site plan, there are very limited areas where they're going to be able to propose this. Most of this site is identified with traffic flow for, uh, either servicing the gas station, the pumps, uh, getting to the tanks to, uh, fill the, the tanks up with refuge, I mean, with fuel, um, and also parking spaces. And, and then they have to have pedestrian flow to get to the building on the sidewalks. There aren't that many areas on this site where we're gonna bless this. They'll probably get the ice maker, they'll probably have a propane sales area or, and one other area. Where we've experienced where people want to put these a lot occasions is out between the pumps, and we're not gonna allow that to occur.
Klooster?
Yeah, I would, I, I guess I would just say too, if I'm, if I'm understanding Mr. Twing correctly, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's fairly obvious where they can go and not cause an issue. And the staff feels administratively they can review that. If they see something that looks weird, it would likely get in front of us. And would, would you?
Yes.
Say that's correct, Mr.? Okay, thank you.
Right, and, and the petitioner also has the right, if staff rejects where they want to put it, they have the right to bring it back to you for you to review it. So it's not just one way or the other. It's, if, if we deny something they feel strongly about, they can obviously come back before you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there further discussion for the questions for the petitioner from Mr. Twing or a motion? Ms. Beaky? Oh, you're on, uh, move.
I thought Shar was saying something.
Shaking her head. Is there? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move approval of the site plan.
With the listed contingencies?
With the listed contingencies.
Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Mr., well, you did it again, you did it at the same. I'm gonna count Mr. Gantina as the second.
We're all synced up today.
Is there, uh, any further discussion on this? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes, the site plan with the contingencies is approved. Congratulations, good luck with your purchase and your further endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item of business is a sign variance. And this is, uh, a sign variance request to install a wall sign, uh, in excess of the, um, zoning ordinance, uh, limitations for metals and time at three oh one South Main Street, their new location. Mr. Twing?
Uh, very briefly, uh, uh, the site is located on the southeast corner of South Main and, uh, Third Street. Uh, it is located in sign area three of the sign ordinance. Uh, as you can see from the, uh, subject memo, uh, they are proposing a sign on the west elevation that exceeds the allowable, uh, uh, square footage. Uh, and so they are requesting a variance to allow a, a sign to exceed that allowable amount. Based on the building department's review of their proposal, the maximum permitted wall sign would be slightly over, uh, thirty-three square feet. Uh, they are proposing a sign, a wall sign on the west facade of some fifty-six point eight-three square feet. So they're asking for a variance to, to allow a bigger sign.
All right. Is the petitioner here? We're looking for the petitioner for metals and time? For the, um, signs and engraving, are those folks here?
No, they are not here. Just, just me, the petitioner.
Oh, okay, you're metals and time?
Yes.
Okay, please introduce.
I changed, I was wearing, uh, dust coats earlier, but I changed because I was waiting so long. How are you guys doing? Good evening, and thank you for everyone staying late. I know you guys are working hard and, uh, hopefully everyone's staying safe.
Okay, can you state your name for the record and, and then proceed?
Sure.
Your full name?
Sure, Sergio Basmajin, on behalf of Metals and Time, the petitioner, for the sign variance that we're here at tonight.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, um, I don't, I assume you also have the drawings of what we submitted, because I didn't see it in the, in the packet that you send us. So a couple of things I wanted to point out. First and foremost, um, the calculation that they have is slightly off. The, the west elevation is actually three hundred and sixty-five point six square feet, not three hundred and thirty. Uh, it's twenty point three, um, feet wide by eighteen feet tall. So a couple of things, first I'll tell, I'll tell you a couple of things and I'll go over the points. Uh, yes, we're asking for a variance, but technically we're only requesting not even fifty percent of what we're allowed if you calculate the west and the north facade. So yes, we're asking for five percent more on the west, but technically on the south facade, we're not even close to, to, I think, thirty percent of what we're allowed there. If you calculate both of them, together we're allowed two hundred and thirty square feet. We're only, uh, petitioning to only use seventy-seven square feet of signage. And part of the reasons why we're doing that is because, one is to go with the flow of the street and the look of the main street. Meaning if you look at our neighbor, uh, Smokies and, um, Vera Asian and everyone else in that block, and I'll just use Smokies as an example, they have a smaller facade than we do. And we're, and the size there, sorry, they have a smaller square footage than we do. And their sign is actually about the size that we're asking for. And part of the reason why we're doing that is because if you drive down Main Street for rev- relevance, sorry, to be relevant and to be seen, you need your sign there. And it's really not that big of a sign that we are asking for. And if you want, I can go over all A, B, C, D, all the different criteria that we, that we need to meet. Or you can ask me the questions and, and I can tell you that, that stuff. So basically, the reason why we did that is to keep the beauty of the building. If you notice, if, I'm assuming, um, you have the drawing. Tim, I don't know if you have the drawing that we submitted, but they had, um, an awning on the left, on the north side, and we wanted to keep that. And we're actually upgrading that to a nicer looking awning, more black, clean. And that's part of the reason why we wanted to keep the original beauty of the building and, and hence put our majority of the sign on the west facade. And it's really not that big of a s- uh, sign that we're asking for. But did you guys want me to go through all the points, A, B, C, D, and see how we met the criteria? Or what do you want me to do?
Well, um, it's, it's your pleasure, but you have to support the request.
Okay, so let me ask you, okay, so let me go over that, and I apologize. So, so the things that we have to do, that the property could not reasonably accommodate the sign permitted at that specific location. So basically, again, reason why was because even though we're allowed between both sides, two hundred and thirty, and we're only, uh, require, we're only requesting seventy-seven total square footage is because, again, on the north side, is that we had that awning and we kind of wanted to keep that beauty of the awning. And we're actually beautifying the whole space, we're spending a lot of money on that and making it look real, real nice. And in keeping that awning, I think it's gonna beautify that corner a lot more. And again, to keep in line with the look of the rest of the buil- streets, sorry, rest of the, the spaces on that block. B is if you looked at B was, um, that the appeal results in unique circumstances with architectural and characteristics of the area. That's basically what we were saying. We wanted to keep the beauty of that north awning. And, um, and so forth, that's what we were doing there. C is basically saying the same thing. D, um, for visibility, again, we're sacrificing over fifty percent of our signage and moving it there. And again, it is not three hundred and thirty, um, total square feet, it's actually three hundred and And again, it is not three hundred and thirty um total square feet, it's actually three hundred and sixty five. So we're only going over by five percent. And and if you look at this variance, it's justified because actually we're not gaining anything. We're actually asking for less than we're allowed. And it's and it's not actually going to be something that down the line, it's setting a precedent for something else because A, we're using less. B, we're keeping in line with um the neighbors. And I really, I mean, it's a minor difference between what what is really allowed and what's what we're asking for. And and again, if you look at um the neighbor that only has, I believe, fourteen or fifteen feet of frontage, their sign and you have it on the front cover of of what we're asking for is about the size of what we're asking for anyway. Meaning if you look at the picture um that is in that package of that three page that's relevant for ours, the tree is kind of blocking it, but that Smokey sign is about that size. So it all now, like I said, if you look at the the drawing, and again, no one has confirmed that you guys do have that. So if you look at our
It's in the it's in the packet, it's on it's on the website.
Okay, good. So that's what I'm that's what
You could see what they have.
Yeah, and we had a color.
It's all there. It's all there.
Thank you, Tim. And that is the color rendering that you see there. So basically, we took the old um red awning that they had, um moved it up on the north side, made it black, made it a lot more cleaner. We're basically putting a brand new awning there, beautifying that corner, really um showing the booty of the beauty of the taller windows. And again, on that one side, we have a hundred and ten linear feet. And part of the hardship was that people drive up and down Main Street, and and that's really where they're seeing the sign. If we put it on the other side, A, we would ruin that um, I think, beautiful awning that does good to the characteristics of downtown and to that corner. And again, it would be not be as visible as being in the front. And it's not like we're asking for a huge sign in the front and and with the relevance. Sorry, in according with the side piece, it's actually a lot smaller than what we're total allowed. So I'll leave the floor open if you guys have questions for what we're presenting.
Well, I got a a couple right off the bat. So um, well, first of all, you're talking about the design. Is Mr. Vitale your architect?
Yes, he is. Yes, they are.
Okay, so I
Andrew Danaher from Stucky Vitale.
Okay, uh, I um, I think the north side looks very nice. It looks great. I love your logo there and all that. I I do think my immediate reaction is that the western sign uh seems out of proportion to me. What what um what, how did you settle on that size of sign?
Well, again, we looked at the neighbors. Our sign is smaller than Vera Asian because we're a smaller square footage. But it's but it's about the same size as uh Smokies is, and Smokies is only fifteen feet wide, same height. Ours is twenty, little over twenty feet wide and same height. So if you really look at that, it made sense to put it centered into the window. And even though the square footage is based on, you know, overall size, if you really look at it, the writing is not not that large. It's just a clean writing along with the logo that we've had in Royal Oak for over twenty years. It's it's just a very clean, elegant look. It's not loud. It's going along with um basically the look of everybody else around there.
What is the sign uh lit? I can't tell from this.
Well, when you say lit currently, like what we have now, basically, it's going to be black iron. Everything that you see black is is lifted up, I believe, um as it says in there because I don't have that package with me, but I believe it's less than four inches protruding from the building. And it's backlit, so meaning during the day you don't see it at night, but it kind of looks like it glows. So there's no light actual coming out of the sign. It's kind of hitting it to the back towards the building.
Well, are the are the letters cut out or or luminous or?
No, basically, that's why the black is, when you look at it, just like we have our current sign, it's the same style. So it's basically um black iron raised up four inches. And in the back, there's, I believe, one inch gap from the surface. And the light is inside the sign shining back onto the building. But what we did, if you notice on there too, commissioners, that we put a, because it's um red brick, when you do that and you have a black logo, you're really not going to notice it. So that's what that, it looks almost like a business card. It's a it's a backer in the back just to be a different color so it's visible. Because it it does not light up forward, so it's not one of those um luminescent lights that that basically when you're driving by, blind you and stuff, it it there's no light coming forward. It's just hitting the back of the building.
Is the sign fabricated already?
The sign is not fabricated. No, we wanted to wait till we got approval.
Right, um, any other questions? I know I just uh took over there, but any other questions for the petitioner? Um, this is this is sign variance. This is not a public uh hearing. I don't take it. Uh, Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I I'll just point out to the petitioner that while um he says that his signage on the north side totals twenty square feet or something like that, um, the way we measure signs is that the total, the space between the three words on that north side count as part of the sign. So it's not just the three words that are total, it's that whole band of signage. Unless I, and if I am mistaken, Mr. Twing will cor- correct me.
Are we talking about the awning?
No, on the north side.
Yes.
Where you've got diamonds, metals in time, and fine jewelers.
Correct, that's also
Let me, let me, let me jump in a little bit. The only appeal that's in front of you tonight is the west elevation. The north side, uh, based on the building department's review complies. You can have awnings on or awning signs on in replacement of window signs. The sign ordinance allows a variety of types of signs in it. Wall signs are limited to ten percent of the facade area or a hundred square feet. So and and it's applied to each facade. You don't, it it doesn't count one side and and get a totality. So uh, the west elevation is allowed to have ten percent of the facade area as measured by the way the building departments constantly measured them. So that's where the number came from. The north side, very similarly, would have uh up to ten, up to ten percent or a maximum of a hundred square feet. No matter whether the that facade is two thousand square feet or not, it would be capped at ten percent or or a hundred square feet. So they're not entitled to uh two hundred square feet on the north side. They are entitled to window signs and or awning signs. So I believe the building department is treating the awning signs as that. And then there's a logo on the north side. So I just, I don't want anybody to confuse, you're not granting variances on the north elevation. That's a The only one you're, the only one you're dealing with is the west elevation.
But Mrs. Douglas, to answer your question too, and not to cut you off, in that calculations, it does have the awning lettering in there as well, just like we were told to. So even with those, we still well below what we're allowed on both sides. Even though you're not looking at both sides right now, but if that's what you're asking, I did put that in the calculations there too as well.
Right, and my point was it's immaterial. That is, you can't you can't add the two sides together and say, look, the total is below a certain standard. I I am agreeing with Mr. Twing. We are only examining here the west facade.
Correct, but but I I was just bringing up the point that, yes, we can make that smaller and go much, much, much larger on the north side because we're allowed a lot more. Yes, uh, uh, Tim, you might say that, you know, we're not allowed to have up to two hundred like it's saying, but we still can put a hundred square foot sign on that side, and we're not doing that. So we're just trying to keep it, even though the letter of the law says that it's ten percent for each side, I just thought it would look aesthetically better and go with more of the downtown feel if we did it the other way versus having a huge sign on that side and having a real tiny sign on the side. Because of that awning play and 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 being like when you're driving down um Main Street, you see everybody's sign is mostly on that on that area.
All right, other questions for the petitioner or Mr. Twing?
I I have a question on the sign that's facing, um, oh, sorry, can I go ahead?
Yes.
On the sign facing Main Street, the one that we're we are addressing, when I look at the picture that I printed out, it looks like it's a sign on on white background. Or as you described, it's the letters are going to be just directly onto the brick with the backlighting.
Correct, we are putting some kind of backing in the back only because, again, if you look at black um lettering, because it's not lit outwards and it's black, and that was just, that's just our color, over red brick with um black or or undertones, you're really not going to see it. So either A, um, we were just going to change that color, but we thought it would look better with the black awning on the other side. So that's why we put a backer there. And and we're proposing to do that like a stone off-white color, but we're open to whatever color that you think, just something that obviously would, just like if you look at our current building at Fourth and Main, it pops, it doesn't need a backer because it's it's on a limestone wall and that black shows. But if you put that on the, we tried it with uh the on over the red brick, and and your eye wouldn't even notice it. You could you can don't see it.
Well, I just want to make also a different comment. Please remember, when people are in Royal Oak, hopefully they're walking around and not just driving by. And so the visual connection to, you know, what's in your windows and all that is also what's going to bring them into the space, not just having a giant sign. Because hopefully they will have already known that it's that's it's uh there. Um, and so something at at ground level, eye level is also part of the whole thing in terms of um, uh, in terms of finding the business.
I agree.
There
And again, one point I wanted to make it, but and Tim, you can correct me on this. But again, in your letter, you have that we're allowed three hundred and thirty, but it's actually three hundred and whatever I told you. And the drawing shows that it's actually uh three hundred and sixty five square feet, so it'll be thirty six, and we're at
I will correct you. I I go by what the building department and the way they measure it. I don't go by each individual sign company's drawing. So we're going to go by our numbers in every occasion.
Okay, but the drawing there is, that is the right measurement. So I mean, we have that to scale that, I mean, I don't know if you maybe you stop the brick at um where your wall is, but technically
We can continue to argue about
I'm not arguing, I'm just
But we're going to go by our numbers. If they want to grant the sign, they'll grant it. If they don't want to, they won't.
Not a problem, sir.
All right, other other questions and comments?
Yeah, I'll just, I'd just like to comment that um uh, in the years that I've been on this commission, um, we we take a harder look um in our central business district, our downtown areas, that sign variances. We pretty much stick to the the ordinance allotment for um signs in the downtown business district. I I don't see an exception taking place here. Um, I I'll agree with uh Mr. Casada's comments that the the sign um seems out of scale for the facade. I I understand the trying to factor it in in a whole building approach, doesn't change the fact that it's out of scale for the facade that it's on. Um, and that's part of the reason why we have the ordinance written the way we do. I, again, I I I can't support a variance on this um just because the way we have we have handled the the downtown area consistently since the time I've been on the commission.
And may I say something or not?
Well, but we're going to have the commissioners have a discussion, and I'll give you another chance.
Thank you.
Any other comments in response, Mr. Clooster there? I I obviously already commented, I, that was my initial reaction is that the the sign looks too big to me. Even if there wasn't an ordinance, it looks like it's jammed in there. It needs to be slightly smaller, but that also happens with the ordinances. I also just reiterate what I said before, the north side looks terrific, it's well proportioned. And that's what you want, because to me, the best marketing is you look great. And the better you look, the more the the, you know, the more you're uh putting forth the right image. So that's part of what, why we have the sign ordinance, ordinance, just to just to reiterate what Mr. Clooster's plan was. Commissioner Douglas.
Um, I'm going to uh move to deny the variance, and I and I'll speak to my emotion after it is seconded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Clooster's second, so back to you, Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, I mean, looking at the conditions that have to be met, um, just cherry picking a couple of them out of here. Um, there is, I don't see any um hardship that would fall to this business um because they have a slightly smaller sign. Um, certainly nothing greater than, you know, more than mere inconvenience or monetary concern. Um, and I do think that one of the conditions is that the variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to the other property owners. And I think we have property owners there who have complied with the sign ordinance. Um, and I don't think it's fair to them um to grant a variance when I do not feel that it's necessary or a hardship.
And I'll just follow that up, saying that I don't know about the sign next door. And it sounds like the petitioner is suggesting it's out of uh conformance, but I don't believe we approved that sign on this commission, I can tell you that.
So
Uh, any other comments on the on the on the motion?
Am I allowed to talk?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the last word before we vote on it. Okay, and since there's no comments, it's your turn.
Okay, so so having said that, I mean, you guys are saying that. And can you, uh, Tim, is there any way, because I don't have that on me, I apologize. Actually, you know what? I could pull it up on my phone if you guys give me a minute to grab it. But Smokey sign is hundred percent very close to what we're recommending. And there are, they're only fourteen feet wide, fifteen feet wide. We're five feet wider, same height. So how is that possible that they have that big of a sign? And we're not allowed that sign? So how, I don't, I don't see, and I'm not arguing with you guys, but I don't see how that is in not in line with the rest of the signs that are along there. And again, I know you're not supposed to consider the north, but if you're saying you want a clean look, we're barely putting anything on the north, and we're just putting it there. We can in turn, let's say you get denied on this, I could go put a huge sign on the north side. And
If it didn't, if it didn't look as good, I would hope you wouldn't do that, but
No, I'm not, I'm not But but Smokey sign is is very close to the size that we're saying, and we're much, we're a larger space than they are. So it's not uh uh out of touch with that. And then if you want, I also, if you guys, if you please the commission, let's say right now we are at Tim, where are we at right now, fifty? I apologize, it's just been a long day at work today. Okay, so we're we're at fifty six point eight three. Would it be fine if we brought that down to forty five square feet? And basically bring it down about fifteen percent from where it is right now? Since we haven't made it, just shrink that down to that size.
Listen, I'll I'll respond as um the second to the motion. We can only respond to what's in front of us. And so we're responding to that right now. Uh, so unless you, unless you meet the requirements of the ordinance, um, we'd have to see it again.
You can't amend, commissioners, you can't amend that and say that it's approved at forty five square feet? I thought you guys have, I mean, I've been at meetings where you guys, someone presents something and you guys say, well, we don't like that, but we'll agree to this. Tim, are we not allowed to have an amendment on that?
Well, the the planning commission has a discretion to grant variances uh at the point that you requested or something potentially less than that. I, not to speak for the planning commission, but I do know that they um, when it comes to signs, like to see the sign that's being proposed uh when they're granting a variance simply because that does play into their past discussions about um whether they're going to grant it. So yes, I guess to answer your question, they could grant the variance that's requested or something less. Whether they chose to do that or not is up to the planning commission.
So I'm saying the same size that it is, just to be clear, and just instead of the fifty six that it is now, we can shrink that down. And Tim, uh, just to um address this again, is the signage counted by the the overall rectangle or where the letters end? Because I don't know if they counted that right too. And I can go grab my phone just to see it because I'm going off of memory. So the paper that you have in front of you, is that the full measurement of the whole rectangle or where the letters end?
It's it's based on the background area of the sign, so it's the whole rectangle. You'll see the letter from the building official that it's based on a sign that's five feet, two inches high by eleven feet wide, and that's the dimensions of your background area.
Yeah, so basically I was proposing
Which is, which is by the zoning or by the sign ordinance, your sign area. It's not an individual determination, it's written that way and depicted that way in the sign ordinance. So that's how the sign is measured in terms of
So I mean, uh, we can make that a little bit smaller. And instead of being at fifty six, if it pleases you guys, if it pleases the commission, we can go down to And instead of being at fifty-six, if it pleases you got, if it pleases the commission, we can go down to forty-five. But I, and obviously, it's you guys, it's it's the commission's decision, you know, we'll buy by whatever you guys say. But I do feel that even at the size that it is now, it is going along with the rest of the signs that are on that street. But we, I don't have a problem going down to that, but when you, when we did it originally at the size of thirty I mean, we went at at thirty-six because that's what we thought we were allowed, because that's what we did our measurements at. And it does say it's the width and height. And I mean, at the end of the day, you can, I can measure it and I can show it to you and you you can measure it yourself. But if your measurement is off, we can't go go by a measurement that's not correct.
Well, if you're correct that the measurement is too small of the western facade, then your sign would be larger than the thirty-three uh feet allowed, so it's already gonna be larger and closer to the forty-five that you're you're talking about. So if you're right about that, then it's gonna be more in proportion to what what we're talking.
Okay, so that that's all I'm asking. If we can go a little bit more than that. That would keep us, keep us happy and uh ultimately it's your guys' decision. I'm not gonna uh, you know, beat a dead horse on something, but if we can get a little bit more on that, I just think it will look a lot nicer. Because I don't want to put more signage on that other side, because I do think, like you guys have mentioned, it does look very nice. We want to keep it clean.
Mr. Chair, I think it's time to vote.
All right, I uh I would agree, and um so we have, the motion on the table is to deny the request for the sign ordinance as requested, which is for the fifty-six feet. And I would uh call for the vote. We'll start with Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
Ms. Beaky.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Cantina.
Yes.
Mr. Closter.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So the request for the fifty-six feet is is denied. Um, you certainly are are able to comply with the sign ordinances, and I think you'll like the sign that you get out of it, quite frankly. Is there any other discussion or motion on this? All right, seeing done, then the uh item is concluded. Uh, thank you very much to the petitioner. I think you're gonna be uh happy at the end of this, and I think the store is gonna look great.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
I was the one thing also, I'm glad you found a spot after the other one didn't work out. You're still in the same vicinity.
People, problem is that people think we've we've been closed now for a couple of years, because that that thing was a nightmare. I mean, I can't even believe we thought for sure the way he was fighting for it, that he had another tenant in there, and I can't believe it's still vacant. It's crazy. So I appreciate that, and we're looking forward to getting into the new project.
Can't wait to see a new spot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. You guys have a good night.
All right. So are we uh now the next order of business is the first order of business? I was at petitioner here for the first uh uh item, which was rezoning a neighborhood business to a planned unit development at six hundred West Eleven Mile Road? Are we ready for that?
Yes, we are.
I believe they're here.
Okay, Mr. Twain, why don't you give us a preview?
Uh, well, very quickly, uh, the site is on the north side of West Eleven Mile Road, right at the corner of Laurel Court. Um, you do have the uh staff report uh in front of you. Uh, the petitioner is proposing to change the zoning from neighborhood business to planned unit development. Uh, they are proposing to demolish the one-story um office building and construct a two-story or a twenty-four foot, twenty-four and a half foot tall uh multifamily building uh with four dwelling units, uh also eight parking spaces uh just north of the building itself. Two of the dwelling units will be on the uh first floor and two will be on the second floor. A neighborhood business uh allows uh residential, but it has a provision that precludes that from being on the uh residential from being on the first floor. Um, so one of the items under the P U D that the uh planning commission uh should consider is whether to grant to uh permission for residential on the first floor. Uh, there is no minimum lot area or maximum density in neighborhood business. The the report also identifies the setbacks for the project. Uh, one of the items is the uh triangle clearance at the corner of uh Eleven Mile and Laurel Court. Uh, there is that ten-foot site clearance uh requirement there that the uh planning commission would also have to uh uh address. Uh, the eight parking spots that I referenced north of the building, four of those are accessed from the public alley that's north of the site. Uh, that alley is sixteen feet wide, uh so it doesn't meet the minimum two-way movement uh for uh drive aisles of twenty feet. Um, so you'd have to accept that as a uh an alternative in terms of the access to those spots. Uh, one of the other requirements in regards to uh uh parking is driveway widths to get to uh parking spaces. There's a maximum driveway width of thirty feet uh in not uh in multifamily and other uh non-residential zoning districts. Those four spots that are accessed from the alley are open to the to the alley, and so they exceed that thirty-foot uh width, uh I believe it's forty feet width. Uh, so you'd also have to allow that to move forward. Uh, there is no screening, obviously, uh in that area from the public right of way or the properties to the north. And then lastly, the uh ten percent landscaping requirement based on staff's calculation is about a little over five and a half percent uh in terms of what's being uh provided on the uh plant. Again, it's a request to rezone uh from neighborhood business to a planned unit development. So it is a recommendation uh to the city commission. Uh, and again, you can either do that as a preliminary approval and where it would come back to you within six months, or you can do it as a final, and then it would go on up to the city commission directly. I'll stop there, see if you got any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Twain? All right, is the petitioner here? They already announced themselves. Why don't you um put your uh introduction on the record and give us your presentation?
Hello, uh, my name is John Deport and uh good evening. I guess we had a little technical difficulty earlier on, so I'm glad we were able to uh stay. I appreciate it. Uh, address is nine-two-zero East Long Lake Road. Um, so we had a a pretty excited about this job here that's in in front of you. Uh, there's a few unique things uh that uh put us in a in a P U D uh kind of climate to try to uh come together on it and it and an agreement that would be uh substantially supported. Um, to the east, just as a memory point, to the east is uh there's some I'm pardon me, to the west, we have the uh the uh the existing uh condominium buildings. And what we would propose on the east end of those, this would be kind of the end cap of that block, to have uh some four rental units here. There'd be four units there just around nine hundred uh square feet uh each. And we've gone ahead and designed this kind of in a unique way. The entrance is actually for the the units themselves is off of Laurel Lane, so when you're traveling uh eastward on Eleven Mile, that's what you'll see. You won't, typically you would see on the end of a building, perhaps that would be uh for multifamily. You know, gas meters, electric meters, they're screened and all that and that, but this, I think, is a lot nicer looking as far as an end cap building is concerned. And then on the the front facade, of course, we call that facing Eleven Mile is uh windows and you have the drawings in front of you. And again, I think that's very in keeping and kind of unique circumstance here on this uh just a little over a tenth of an acre. A plot of land. Uh, we mentioned a little bit about the uh under under uh missing out on the percentage of the landscape. Again, I'm dealing, we are dealing with a pretty, pretty snug snug site here, so we are putting them where we can. There might be some additional possibilities where we can do potted plants or something along those lines uh to help enhance the 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 look along the front. Um, the other thing that we wanted to mention is in the back, we had initially put a plan together where we had parallel parking in the back. Um, what that does is that eliminated uh our access out to the uh alleys. To the alley, pardon me, and then we would just, there would be, like I said, stacked parking. Two units, I'm sorry, two spaces per unit. And that would allow us to just go back right on to uh Laurel Lane. So that was an option we looked at. Um, some planning wasn't real fond of that at that point in time. And suggest we kind of had down this path and get your feedback on it, of course, and see if you had uh had a a swing one way or another, how you'd like to see that handled.
All right, you've um do we have any questions for the petitioners? Mr. Closter.
Uh, yes, have you um approached the adjacent property owner about a potential access easement um such that you could kind of continue the parking language that exists immediately to the west? Um, to avoid using the alley as your drive aisle?
I know we did that. No, I, we haven't approached, uh, we approached uh Todd's on the other side, right? Uh, there was some conversation, which I don't think it's gonna go anywhere, and they they had a thought if we continued Laurel as just a one-way and then came around the back there of a Sherman, uh, maybe that would help it, but I I didn't want to get into that because we have a residential neighbors back here and I I didn't really want to go down that path at all, so we didn't really chase that at all. Uh, but yeah, we could, we could absolutely listen or uh could go ahead and talk to the folks at the the HOA or whatever at the condominium building next door. Hello?
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, have you spoken at all with the owners of the property, uh, the residential house immediately? Uh, what way is that, north of you?
Nope, we haven't talked to them. I figured that we have an old building here right now that we would raise, you know, and kind of clean up the corner. Um, so I I see it as an improvement to the property, but I haven't spoken to them.
It's often a good idea.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So would you consider um uh offering to that property owner um to replace the chain link fence that they have along the south edge of their property to uh install something? I mean, ordinarily, uh, you're expected to install some sort of solid screening wall on the edges of your property. Um, in this case, I'm wondering if you would perhaps offer that to the owner of that uh property, assuming that we go ahead and allow you to use the alley at for access to your parking?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're not opposed to that at all. Uh, we want to be good neighbors uh and good stewards to the to the community. Um, you know, I I I would ask, uh, Tim, did we have any public come out? Uh, I guess that whole more bring anything up to any anybody, do you know?
Uh, well, we did public notice it. Uh, it is a public hearing and the chairman can open that. I'll I'll let Carol answer whether we got any phone calls on this, but.
Yeah, I just, that's that's, it's just.
We didn't notice it.
I'd like to hit all points, and I guess I can just wait and get to him, and I apologize, but yeah, for something along those lines, I I think that was, that would be a very fair and and bright offer, be the right thing to do.
Uh, let me, let me take up uh that issue about public comment. Ms. Swanger, is there any public comment?
There was one public comment on this case. Uh, again, it was Mr. Karlowski who called in and made one call, but three public comments. He made it count.
Right, if you'll proceed.
All right.
This is Rick Karlowski. I'm speaking on uh site plan S P twenty twelve twenty at six hundred West Eleven Mile Road. Um, I think this is actually a very good, a very good plan. It's not too big, it's not too tall. It has ample parking, the setbacks is at, or the the variances it's really looking for is not too substantial, and it's already a condo project next to it, so I think this is a really good one. I don't have any financial uh interest or even real direct developers, but I think it's it's this is the kind of thing that we should be encouraging as far as size and and density. Uh, in another vein, however, the.
And that was the end of his comment regarding this.
All right. Oh. Oh, I got you. You went on to another.
Yeah, it, yes.
I don't need to hear the other half, just the first half was pretty good.
All right, Ms. Beaky.
Um, uh, reviewing this project and taking a look at the site, I really like this overall aesthetically. I think again, I think the scale is nice. Um, and I, if if the current building were to be used as a adaptive reuse, which I know would probably only be its walls i- if if that were likely, I'd be more inclined to be okay with this um Eleven Mile side being right at the sidewalk line. And I realize it's a small s- space, but I wonder about having that building just a little bit back so it's more in line with the property next door, those townhouses. So it gives a little bit more of ease for a person walking by. Um, it would also provide you with that sight line. And I I don't know, I didn't go out and measure, it might be ten feet. I think they might be at the ten-foot setback, so I don't know if you could retain your parking and ease that building back even five feet to make a difference for the person on the sidewalk, because as you know, Eleven Mile is pretty fast. This is a wonderful walkable location. It's a very short walk to the bus stop on Woodward. People can go straight to Detroit or Pontiac, et cetera. I mean, it's really overall, I think it's an ideal as far as the space goes, but that setback and maybe a little bit more green for our uh water retention, et cetera um would go a long way to putting it into the perfect zone to me.
Right, may I respond or?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that would kind of parlay into the tandem parking in the back of the building. If we're able to do that, we could probably actually give you we could line up with the 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 uh the buildings right next door, if we're able to do that. Where we uh had to take a couple of feet out of the building after our first review. And um we were, and I and I I went across the street and to Todd's, and I kind of kept the face of the building even with that one across the way, although I kept it off Laurel Lane quite a bit more than he has, they have theirs. But yeah, if I can get the tandem parking, we can move that back and that would take care of that. And I really wouldn't have a, it wouldn't. There's a critical mass in these things in the in market, and and I know you guys know that better than most. You're you're educated commission, I've felt, been here before. Um, and you know, there there's a certain look that you have to have. To get these buildings to look a certain way, there are some critical masses that we need. I I would hate to have to shrink the building any more than I have. If I get that parallel parking, I can push this back, give you your extra green space, give it the more walkability, as you had mentioned, uh and keep keeping the volume of traffic further away from the pedestrians.
Right, because again, those older buildings were built when Eleven Mile was probably narrower, the cars were slower, it was a different world. And so when we think about the person on the sidewalk, we really want to encourage people to feel comfortable walking downtown, walking over to the bus. Um, and that would go a long way if it were feasible, um, because that little step back that they have with that green space and those little porches, um, it just makes a bit of a difference.
Yeah, that's right, and I could, I could get back to the ten feet that way, and that would no longer require a very, a variance request from.
Commissioner Douglas.
What do you mean by tandem parking?
Yes, uh, cars would be stacked, sorry, cars would be stacked in front of each other. Um, it's like, kind of like parallel parking, but you would own both parking spots, so you would, you would never have anybody behind you that you didn't know were in front of you. I don't know if that makes sense.
Each owner has a spot that one is blocked and one is there.
Right.
This way.
Right, so they, they just have to agree to to who parks where and to maneuver them. Would those spaces be facing, would they oriented north, south, or east, west?
They'd be east, west, uh, behind the building, uh, accessed only from Laurel Avenue. And then to the alley, and we could screen the alley side if we uh provide only eight spaces, four tandem spaces. That'll give us a little room to breathe, give us landscaping in the front, landscaping in the rear, screening. in the rear, screening, and make it probably a little looser site if we could do that.
But that means that those cars would always be backing out onto Laurel. Mr. Twing, is that allowed, acceptable, advisable?
Well, I don't know that that's your only option to do stadium style or whatever, how you want to refer to the parking. You could basically take this configuration, push the building north, and your only access to it would be from the alley, and they would simply have to pull from through one space to get to the next, the southern space. You don't have to design it off of Laurel. And technically, each unit is supposed to have two spots, so you could, but you would lose the driveway. You could totally cut off access to Laurel and do all the access from the alley. Push it a little bit south and...
Correct.
Yep. And make the building go north.
Yes, exactly right.
Cool.
Cool.
So yeah, I just want to comment, I'm generally supportive of the project. I think it's appropriate density, appropriate location, appropriate design. I was concerned about sustainability and how far away we were from the ten percent, but it sounds like we've got a reasonable solution to push the building north, which if I heard you correctly, would allow you then to meet the ten percent green space requirement. Otherwise, I think it's, you know, it's a difficult site, it's a small site, to do much more with it within the constraints, I think is difficult. So I think you've done a good job here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, so we have two things here. Tim, this is also a two-step process?
No, it's a, it's a, this one is a recommendation. The steps you have is one, to decide whether you're going to approve it as a final PUD and recommend approval of that to the city commission, or whether you want to approve it as a preliminary PUD. And then, and then they have six months to bring revisions back to you before you take action on a recommendation for the final. But it is a single vote today. And it is a recommendation to the city commission ultimately. The question I would have for you is if you're looking for revisions that impact the deviations, we should walk through those, what your modifications would be to the site that you would give them direction on, and then you'd have to decide whether you wanted to see a revised plan. So I, I'm waiting for your, I guess, direction on where the planning commission wants to go. If you wanted to recommend approval in the way it sits right now, obviously, you don't need to do anything. If you're going to require the building move north to provide a setback along Eleven Mile, I would like to know what that setback is. If it's matching the building to the west, that's fine, but we need to know that. That will impact access from the driveway to Laurel. It probably would make it too narrow to comply. If you wanted to allow stadium-style parking where all the access was from the alley, that's fine. But all of those things, the planning commission would have to articulate, so then you can decide whether you want to see those revisions before that goes to the city commission, or whether you want to recommend that, subject to those modifications. We're here based on what you would like to do.
Mr. Kloster.
Yes, can I, I'd just like to ask a question. I didn't see, I didn't see refuse collection screening. Is that, is this a street-side refuse containers?
I'll answer that one. On the site plan, you can see there's a pair of double doors at the back end of the building, going in parking lot. We carved into the building a little to put the refuse trash in there, and they're screened there.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I, I'll pipe up. I've been out to the site, and the screening issue is, is an issue of the, if the cars are going to pull in off Laurel and point their headlights to the north. And so I think that definitely has to be resolved, even if their cars pointing in both directions. It just seems to me those lights are going to be shining into the, into the house next door. So that's an issue that definitely has to be resolved, I think. I think I would want the plan to come back myself. Commissioner Douglas.
Oh, I'll take a swing at a motion here. So, let me get my memo up in front of me. I will move that we, planning commission, grant provisional approval and ask the applicant to come back with a revised plan, which incorporates the following. One, move the front facade to match the facades of the building to the west. Two, allow stadium-style parking oriented north and south in the back lot, using the alley as the driveway. Three, approach the owner of the adjacent residential property and offer to put up a brick or mason three-foot screening wall. I think that's kind of our standard in terms of headlights and taillights and so forth. And did I hit everything, fellow commissioners? Did I leave anything out?
Maybe just add the green, greenery that would come in where you move the building back.
Yes, thank you. And add landscaping to the space on the, what is that, the south facade, and include that in your designs that you bring back to us.
And I, if I can, is that, you were asking if that's everything?
I'm asking if that's everything. I'm writing it, doing an omnibus thing here. I want to make everybody happy.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna promote or propose something that I noticed that the drawings are sealed by Mr. Waltz, who's a structural engineer, and I would ask that these are difficult problems that need to be solved, and I would ask the petitioner involve a licensed architect when they bring their plan back.
Oh, absolutely.
I will incorporate that into the motion. Anybody else want to throw anything in?
Can I ask a question?
Nope. That's my motion.
Not yet. Is there a second?
Sorry. I'll second.
Second by Mr. Guntina. Any, Mr. Kloster.
I'm going to be supporting this motion as well. I just want the petitioners to pay attention to their refuse collection strategy is not going to work in this proposed way, so make sure that that is addressed when they come back and see us. Wait, I'll, did, just to specify, was their motion preliminary or was it final?
It's preliminary.
Preliminary, okay. So then, yes, when you come back and see us, please make sure...
Right, right. We would, we would recommend the approval of the rezoning, but the plan would have to come back.
Yeah, you're granting preliminary approval of the PUD, which by ordinance allows a petitioner to come back within the next six months. They could come back next month if, or may not have time for that, but no, as soon as they get it, we can bring it back. I just want to read through the action quickly to what your granting is under the preliminary approval also is, that there's two units on the ground floor. The site distance triangle issue under number two is going to disappear if the melting goes back, so you're not granting that. The, number three, the screening on the north part you're requiring, so that that's not a no screening is allowed. The landscaping is going to get revised in order to comply, so number four is going to get changed. Number five, you're going to allow them to have a forty-foot wide driveway to access from the alley, and you're going to allow them to use the alley at sixteen feet as far as a driveway. Everything else is standard, continued to, but I just wanted to clarify those revisions to the staff report and add the items that Commissioner Douglas included.
All right. All right, any further discussion? Commissioner Douglas.
If I may humor me here for a moment, I went back to January seventh of this year and looked at the extensive document that staff had prepared with some possible changes to our zoning. And I want to read, if, again, humor me here, a couple of sections. One says, and this was part of their rationale for some of these changes, "Allowing more dwelling types in commercial zoning may encourage redevelopment of properties along commercial corridors that have been vacant for some time, many of which may be too small for modern commercial development. PUD and conditional zoning applications have already been approved at some of these sites for projects with only multifamily dwellings and no commercial uses," which is what we're seeing here. "Also, most mixed-use projects approved since 2002, where ground-level commercial space was required, have had difficulty leasing such spaces and obtaining tenants." And I think this is, the project that we're looking at here is an embodiment of the conditions that the staff described. Interestingly, they always said, "For sites that are adjacent to a public alley, vehicular access to and from the public alley shall be provided to the extent reasonably feasible." Again, we have not changed our zoning ordinance in any way, but we're already anticipating that possibility. So that's all.
Thank you. Back to the motions on the table, further discussion. All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
Ms. Binkie.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Guntina.
Yes.
Kloster.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So you have your preliminary approval, you've got your instructions to revise the plan and bring it back to us within six months. Congratulations.
Nice job.
Very much. Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. Have a good evening.
Nice job. Sorry we missed you earlier when you were here.
I was also. Sorry.
Yeah, you were first.
Well, ended on a good note, right?
Very good, good.
Thank you all.
Save the best for last.
Thank you.
All right, I don't think there's anything else left on the agenda unless I'm mistaken. Tentative, wait, there is something else. Tentative schedule for follow-up of issues discussed at joint meeting with the zoning Board of Appeals. Now, that's a big discussion, but we're only talking about a schedule for that, right? That's what...
Well, and what I can jump in on is the planning commission had asked staff to look at it, try to get you a schedule of what we were working on. I don't have a complete schedule done yet. We're talking with the city's communication specialist about a survey, and she's been tied up with some of the marijuana stuff in terms of putting the applications and getting those, getting that together to go out. And that did go live yesterday, so people can apply for those licenses now. So that's part of why I didn't quite get it done for today. And staff is putting some graphics together, some illustrations that we hope to have done by the end of the month. So I'm thinking that probably either at your January or at your latest, the February meeting, we can give you probably some of the items at the February meeting, some of the minor ones to consider. The other ones will give you an actual timeline on, but given the holiday that's coming up and the time, and the time off will be for that, I don't think we'll have anything ready for January, but I think by February, we'll have a couple of items for you to consider. And then we'll give you the schedule for the rest, so. I just, I knew you'd asked for this, and I didn't want you to forget about it. So there's no action necessary, but...
Good, thanks for staying on top of that.
All right, so that was, that was a report is what it was. All right. Anything else from any of the commissioners?
Good meeting, everybody. I mean, tough subjects, and I think we did a good job.
And thanks, Monica, for jumping in on your first meeting, also appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
And I wasn't picking on you, but the way I, my habit is, once I start in the order, I do the order every time the same way, so that's why you...
That's perfectly fine, thank you. Kept me on my toes. And thank you, Ms. Schwanger and Mr. Wilson.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All right. Call for the, this is a voice vote, okay? We're not going to do roll call. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Good night, everybody. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Twing.
Good night, everybody.
Holidays, everybody.